Good evening. It's Wednesday, September 10th, 2025. Welcome to the Town of Carmel Town Board. Tonight is a work session. I call this meeting to order and everyone please rise face to flag. Councilman Lugo will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to take a moment of silence for all those men and women who fight to protect and serve our freedom each and every day. For all those men and women that we have lost September 11th and for a young man who lost his life earlier tonight, Charlie Kirk. Thank you.
Thank you. I welcome everyone that's here for Carmel Water District Number Two. Tonight, we have a presentation from Delaware Engineering. That's the company that we asked to go through all the options and do a cost analysis and a supplemental report to what we had previously gotten from Hazen and Sawyer like in 2019, I think, right? Yeah, 2020. So the gentleman from Delaware Engineering?
So you have Matt Davies on the back on the computer. You have Avalon here and you have Alan Tavner. You have myself, Rich Franzetti, Town Engineer. Most of you know me. They're here, as supervisor said, to present their findings of the supplemental report. The town board heard what you said. We went out. We got the supplemental report completed. Think you'll be happy with the results. I caution people to compare apples to apples on the back end from the prior one to now, but I'll let them take over.
Hi. Everybody hear me? I want to try and stand up and interact there. No? Screaming at a microphone? Is this on? You hear that? Okay, good. All right, hi. I'm Glenn Amrod, Delaware Engineering. This is Matt and Alan. We were firm offices Albany, Oniana, Goshen, Red Hook, and Portchester are bigger offices. Just we do about 150 to 200 million dollars worth of construction in water and wastewater a year. Just a little bit about who we are, no big deal. Like you said, we were hired by the town back in January, town went out for RFP to provide a supplemental engineering report on your water plant that was priorly done by another engineering firm. We've completed that and we're here tonight to sort of represent to you guys what our findings were. There was several alternatives. Your existing plant is a 1 million gallon per day plant that was constructed in 76. It's currently doing about .8 MGD. There's about 1,800 services in that district. And your water is coming from Lake Lenida owned by New York City and New York City DP. The water is treated right now by three diatomaceous earth filters. Then we have some high lift pumps that pump up out of that water plant into your system, into some storage tanks. Currently, your water demand is approaching your design capacity and that's sort of why partly we're here today to kind of discuss these things. And traditional water patterns are changing. More water usage for different things and aging infrastructure you have there now is you're relying on a sort of an outdated technology in the diatomaceous earth. It's not an easy product to come by. It's kind of a single source. There's not a lot. I mean, it's multiple sources, but not a lot. It's not easy to come by. It's a good thing to get away from. So that's sort of how we got to where we are. And without further ado, we can start going over the alternatives that we looked at. Alternative one was to upgrade the existing water treatment plant and construct new clarifiers on an adjacent parcel to get treatment that way. That alternative included sort of adding a little addition on the side of the existing plant. We're going to utilize that existing plant, utilize those existing diatomaceous earth filters and add a fourth one at that building. And we would construct a new building up on the new site with a couple of clarifiers in that that would get hit first to get a little pre-treatment before going into those diatomaceous earth filters. That would require, that we would be relying on, you know, that outdated technology, but it could, you know, it would work. And I think we can present some numbers. We're shown in the beginning and we'll recap those again at the end when we compare all of the options. The second alternative was a conventional rapid sand filter plant and clarifiers that we would construct entirely on the upper site. So we would abandon the existing building, construct all of this up on top. There would be clarifiers with an enclosure over the top, a new building that would house all of the rapid sand filter equipment. As you can see here, there's backwash, pipe galleries, and a clear well. Then pump out of there, just like you do now, up into your distribution system. Here's alternative three. Alternative three, these costs are showing you the capital cost up top, the O and M at net present value and the depreciation at net present value, which we've put together for each plant. So your real capital cost is that top number for the plant. The other numbers we put together so you could see what it's going to cost you over the life cycle of this project. So each one of these, when we get to the front, if you want to flip back to one and two, just for that sheet so they can see that. That's two. So that's the rapid sand filter. So the first one, if you looked at just the capital cost, what is going to cost you to do that project in construction is around 17, 16, 8. Go to the second one. This guy is about 14. And this one here is around 13. And that's, this is where we are now. So we're at alternative three, which is the plate clarifiers with a rapid sand filter. So what you would have there is a big plate clarifier, plate setter that comes in, water comes in. You know, you hit it with some chemical, you get the flock going, it hits the plate clarifier, settles out there, and off we go into our sand filters. They go through a sand filter into a clear well and out into the distribution through some high lift pumps that would do just what we're seeing, you're seeing today. Alternative four is a trident unit. This is a packaged plant. It's another sand filter, if you will. It's just a packaged one. It has a clarifier built in to the sand filter. It all comes one big unit. You gotta do a little bit of pre-treatment with some chemicals and you have to have some backwash. And that's pretty much it to these things. They're pretty simple. Little more, what was the cost on that one was 14, 3.
Excuse me. From here, I can't see. When you say 13, 14, are we talking millions?
Million dollars. Million. Yep. Yeah, those are the construction costs.
The initial construction.
Initial construction costs. The other, so this is alternative five, which is a DAF unit, dissolved air flotation and a micro filtration plant. So here you're gonna, you know, you have a tank up front that you're hitting with some high pressure air. It's going to help the instead of, before we were forming a flock and letting it settle, this guy, you're hitting it with some high pressure air and you're getting it to create air bubbles that your particles grab onto and sort of float to the top. And you're going to move it off the top where everything else, we hit with some chemical, created a heavy flock and it settled. So this is a different sort of technology, little, in my mind, a little more difficult, more intricate equipment. Then you would go from there into a micro filtration, which is a membrane, which the water would go through these membranes, which again is, you know, it's a state of the art system. It's a little more intricate and could be more difficult. And what was the cost of that guy? I can't remember. 14.8 for your, million for your initial cost. So those were the first five alternatives. They were alternatives to what already existed in the, in there. There was an engineering report that already had an alternative in it. These were what we were asked to evaluate. The other alternative is no action at all. Obviously, that's not a great option for you. I think you need to do something. Your system's aging and it's at the point where I believe you need to start thinking about doing something. And then alternative seven would be regional consolidation. This would be going to some, getting your water from someone else's water plant or another service and you have very large transmission lines. And the economics of that would not work out. It'd be way more expensive than just upgrading your plant and taking care of what you already have. I'm going to let Matt talk to you a little bit. Here's a summary of all of our costs. So we went through some of the alternatives. These are all the capital costs on the top of all five. That's why we kind of quickly went through it before. But here we will kind of dig in a little more and Matt can kind of go over what's included in these numbers and how he got there.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Matt, I'm just sorry. It's me. Before you move on, can you, because a lot of us don't even understand a lot of it and you kind of went kind of fast. What are the, can you just, what are the pros and cons of each one? Like I heard you say what each one was and you guys understand it, but what is the pros and cons of each one of them?
So obviously the costs are on, like alternative one, the real con of that is you're using an outdated technology of your diatomaceous earth. You're using, your building down there is already, you know, beyond its useful life. It can be updated and retrofitted to give you an operating system that, a water plant that works, right? But there's definitely a con to that, that it's older and kind of long in the tooth and the technology is sort of a little outdated and not easy to get the, and you also have to worry about that diatomaceous earth that gets out in your pipes and creates other problems.
Is there any pros to section one?
I had something on that.
Yep.
We looked at this thinking that we would use, to the greatest extent possible, the construction you already had there. The pumps are in pretty good shape. There's a clear well there. You've got the filters, which can be upgraded, retrofitted, but it is an old technology and, you know, when we ran through all the numbers, replacing the building and putting in additional clear well up above, it ended up being one of the more expensive, one of the more expensive options. So that was, the intent there is to try to use what we had rather than reinvent the wheel. So, but that's where the numbers fell out.
So all of these options include or don't include replacing the building?
So that's the only option. You would be using the building down below. You would still have a new building.
So one is using the existing building?
And that's the only one that would use the existing building for water treatment.
Okay. Thank you.
And alternative two, yeah.
That was the sand one.
Which is a rapid sand filter and clarifiers, right? So you're going to have a, the cost here is comparable to sort of the other sand filter options. This one includes a clarifier, a couple of large clarifiers that we would have to house on the property.
So I'm assuming that's a pro?
That's sort of a con because the other, some of the other ones just have a single building and you don't have these outside tanks. So these, this one includes some outdoor tanks. The, the.
Can you go back real quick?
Yep. The picture.
Yeah.
There you go. So see it has these two clarifiers outside.
Okay.
That, that's sort of, and they have a dome over them, aluminum covers.
And they would be behind the building, right?
Yeah, we could put those behind the building, try to hide them as best we can. That would, that was the idea behind those. As far as the sand filter goes, most of these other options are all including a sand filter. They're pretty, they're very similar technologies, the next three that we go over, right? The difference between this and the, and the, what we put is the plate settlers is the plate settlers would go inside the building. They're pretty compact, small footprint. So you wouldn't, you wouldn't have this large tankage outside.
Okay, so the.
The tanks were, no, they had a dome over them, aluminum cover.
That's where you're creating the block, the clutter block?
Yes.
So I just want to, Susie, there was not a pro and con as part of this report as a, as we know it as a typical pro and con, right? So the scope originally called for assess these for treatment options and then assess it with the O and M for the life cycle cost. So really the basic pro and con, they're all going to give you treated water. They're all going to meet the requirements going forward, right? The price point. Then it's a cost, right? Each one is different.
Right.
And then it's the life cycle cost, the O and M. So the pro and con here is which one is more work intensive, which one isn't. So the diatomaceous earth is probably a lot more work intensive right now than some of the other technologies. So, you know, that's not explicitly said in the report because we didn't ask for a pro con type thing.
Right.
I mean, I guess they could develop it if we asked them to do that.
No, I don't need them to develop it. I just want, I guess, just a little bit more for everyone here that took their time to come out here just to understand it a little bit, you know, like that one has the two cylinders outside instead of inside.
Correct.
So that's all right. Thank you.
Yeah, so the plate settler, which was the next option, that's inside. It's a more compact way to develop that same flock. Settle it out, get that out before you move on to the sand filter. Both of those options, the second phase is this, that it's second process is the sand filters.
Okay.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think for the purposes of the crowd in the presentation, could you explain what the O and M costs are versus construction? And how it's, you know, playing to the bottom line and how that affects the cost to the rate thing?
That's, Matt will do that in a minute. That's where, he was going to do that, but I jumped back in to kind of answer her question.
Yeah, I didn't want to move forward to that until we understood this.
Yep. So then the, so that's the plate settler option. And then after the plate settler was the
The trident?
The DAF with the, the trident is basically just a package system of what we're sort of, has like a built in clarifier and a sand filter after it. So it's just a package system. So you're sort of, you know, locked into that package.
Does the package give you the ability to expand? So say for instance, five years from now, the demand grows. Does that package give us the opportunity to expand the capacity of the plant or are we locked in to a certain amount of gallons per day?
Good question. It depends on how much space we have in the building. But if you, I think that's a bad one.
Did you guys, when you guys did the study, did you guys look into that, how much room for expansion?
For expansion capacity.
It was not part of the scope originally, right? The scope was 1.1 million gallons per day, not looking, because we can't make it more than what our sewage treatment plant is. So the expansion of the plant to go anything further than 1.1, we can't do it.
Okay.
But you always have a redundant.
I don't think that people understand what package is though. Would you tell them that you're not building, you're building a building versus?
Right. A package, you're building a building and a big steel tank is showing up with all the components and stuff for that process.
It's like a modular?
Already built. You're not building.
Like a modular?
Right. You're not building concrete tanks and putting equipment in it and fitting it out. It's already, it's coming.
It's prefabbed, yeah.
Yeah, and there's still some stuff they have to do when it shows up, but it's, you know, and you're buying a process from a vendor versus.
It's like a Lego kit.
For the most part.
Are those parts harder to obtain if something does go wrong? Does it have to be?
Haven't had trouble with that. That hasn't been an issue, not, certainly not with the trident unit, but it's something that could happen. Trident units are a pretty robust unit and.
A lot of municipalities in the area use the trident, prepackaged plant, correct?
Yes. Mount Kisco, just down the road, has three trident units at their water plant that they've had going for over 20 years.
Can I ask you, when you were doing, when you were doing this report for these five different options, had you looked at the Hazen and Sawyer report for, not for a personal observation of it, but rather a comparison of what they had proposed versus these five here?
Well, I kind of looked at it, I wonder, we wanted to evaluate what you needed without knowing what they were telling us to do. And that's sort of how we approached it initially. So we went through our own evaluation of, you know, what was needed and how to address your concerns. Afterwards, I went back and read through their report to see where they were coming from and understand.
Yeah, because my question later on, maybe not right now, but later on, how did they get to, because I'm actually annoyed because we use experts, right? You know, that's what.
Frank, you have to talk and you're.
So we rely upon our experts, our engineers and whatnot. I'm an attorney. I don't know anything about water other than turn it on, turn it off, flush in the toilet, right? And I think most of us here don't. So when we rely upon our experts, how do we get such different skews in terms of what they had presented as to what we needed and at least I relied upon their representation and their report that we read? And now this is perhaps different, which is great, but I just, what are the comparisons? What's the differences?
I, you know, when I read the report, I don't, you know. I, you know, when I read the report, I don't, you know.
Let me, let me add, the costs that Hazen and Sawyer gave you were higher than all of these costs. They were higher than all of these costs.
Right.
That we've.
Almost double the cost.
All the alternatives.
Right.
So the question is obviously, why did, why were they so high and we were lower?
Right.
The, the reality is, they looked in general concept at some of these technologies and they got large ballpark numbers to put together. When we did this, these are consistent alternatives. Like that one there, that has, you know, the.
Can you, hold on.
The clear well is actually sized, the concrete to build it is actually, you know, measured and calculated out. I got quotes for all those pieces of equipment. We just took it kinda to another level of detail.
So, so.
I think when we got the more detail, you know, it's, it removes some of those uncertainties that they probably were just using as.
Can you pull up the, um, the DAF alternative, the, the one that Hazen and Sawyer also presented to the town board for $28 million?
So that's, that's, this is different, cause it has the microfiltration, but.
Similar, it was similar concept.
Similar concept. Um, you know, a couple of things that could be different is if you, if you buy a DAF unit that comes in a, in a steel tank, or if you, which would be like we spoke to before, a package system, that could be cheaper than if you built one in a concrete tank that's gonna last forever, or one that you get a steel one that's gonna get you through 20, 30 years and you have to do some maintenance too.
But my question is, why would?
I mean, the other thing was with Hazen and Sawyer, they had a million dollars included just to buy the property, that was part of that.
Yeah.
Which has already been taken care of. We've got a significant amount in there that you have to investigate and demo it, but.
Yep.
And then, they, they're using a new structure with different, different, different trades to do the different stuff on it. We're using a fairly straightforward structure, it's like, this would probably be a wood frame building on a concrete.
It's not a $14 million difference.
So that, that stuff doesn't rot out. We could use a pre-engineered steel building, but unfortunately steel rusts, like your old plant.
Yep.
So, so my, so my question.
I, I think to, to what, to where your point is, is how, how did, how did we get to a different place, when you're relying on your experts to give you advice on something? It's like, how would, how do you know who to believe when things start getting that wonky, right? That's kinda where you're at.
Yeah, because if it's a, if it's a little difference, I, I could understand.
Right.
But if it's a big difference, then something is awry.
If you look, if you look at the overall engineering report, there's actual quotes from, you know, the, for all of these pieces of equipment you see here, there's actual quotes.
Right.
Sometimes there's multiple quotes for them. So we've, we've nailed down a lot of the uncertainties. And a lot of times, and I've done engineering reports like this, to like what Hazen and Sawyer did too, you don't go down and get down so far into the details, instead you rely on contingencies and say, okay, I know I can do this for $2 million or $5 million. We actually went through and did quantities for concrete, piping, sand, all that stuff.
So that was, that report wasn't as specific?
We didn't see.
In, in terms of, it just, theirs was more general and they used more quote-unquote general numbers to arrive at their, at their bottom line?
That's what we thought, we don't, we can't tell it, cause it, there's no, there's not that information in the, in the report for us to, to see it. Like, there's not break, the, the estimates they gave, they, they gave in there, which were, were, I'm not saying there's anything, they were, they were, gave you a range of numbers for maybe a handful of items.
Right.
Where in our estimates, we were trying to take it to the next level where we're saying, okay, we, we know this building's gonna be this big, we know we're gonna remove this much dirt, we know we're gonna have this much concrete, cause here's our footprint and here's what, we know what our, you know, how much concrete we're gonna need in, in our, in our footers and our, and our slabs and, and when each, our, we have probably, you know, 30 line items where there's maybe 10 in the, in that one, right? So we're, we're getting a little.
Down into the, down into the details.
Trying to get as close as we can to, I mean, the end, you know, the, the idea of using the DAF unit that, that they had, I mean, there's not, that's not a wrong way to go in the, in, in terms of process.
Right.
They're just proposing the Taj Mahal of DAF plants.
It would just be, right, so we weren't asked to, to go that direction, we didn't need to evaluate that, we needed to.
One of the public hearings that we had, um, somebody had mentioned, well, instead of getting the Cadillac plan, let's do the Ford plan, and Charlie's here, he, he mentioned that.
Frankie, they can hear you, yeah.
Yeah, he had mentioned that in the past. So are we now, are we comparing apples to apples in terms of like Cadillac plan versus Cadillac plan, or are these alternatives something Chevy/Ford, but they're still gonna do the job? That's.
These, these have been.
Because the, the numbers, again, it just doesn't make sense in terms of what they were to what they were looking at now.
It sounds like we're getting.
And I just wanna know what that difference is, cause I think the people wanna know that as well.
So, it sounds, I mean, Hazen and Sawyer, it sounds like we were being taken advantage of by Hazen and Sawyer from the very get-go. I mean, you guys are actually here giving us actual numbers, I know we relied on the experts years ago, but it sounds like you guys are hitting, you know, the nail on the head and actually giving us the actual numbers and breaking it down. I mean, that, to me, that's what it sounds like.
I mean, well, I mean, I don't, I mean, what is what we do, we, we, all we do is water and wastewater, so that's pretty much 95 of our business is doing water and wastewater business in New York State. It's all, all we do. Um, so every day, we're just in it, we know the numbers, you know, on a regular basis, what it costs to, to put a shovel in the ground and do work, so. And they, they, they do too, I'm not saying that they don't know that stuff.
Yeah, but is your 14 gonna turn into 24? I mean, I guess that's the main concern.
That's, that's your concern, and that's a valid concern.
That's a valid concern, yeah.
Absolutely, and that's why we've, we, we went over the numbers several times, we didn't just throw them out there, cause it would've been easier for us just to come in right underneath them and tell you it's 20 million if.
Of course. So when you look, with your, when you completed your report of these, of these five, uh, alternatives, and then you looked at the Hazen report, did you say, how did they get that number?
They didn't really look at it.
Um, well, the number that's presented in the report is older, so the number you're talking about now is like.
Well, if it was an older number, it would, it would, over time, inflation would go up.
Right, I don't know what number they used to escalate, right? So that, that, that's another point to kinda sort of understand of how they may have gotten to where they got to, right? Cause I, I do this stuff all the time.
Yeah.
And in, and in 2018, do we give, you know, we get, start working on a project, and those projects take five years, sometimes even 10, before they become a real project. So you have an estimate out there on the street that you gave to your client in 2018 and 2019, and then, or 2020 even in this instance, and COVID hits and we know everybody saw 10, you know, what we were, traditionally we're seeing a 7% bump year after year after year, we just take that number and we bump it 7, 7, 7. And COVID was a weird thing, cause it, you know, it bumped things really high, but you couldn't just flatly put that number on things, you had to make sure, cause it bumped certain things 30%, it bumped other things, say, 10 or 12. So when you went back to your projects, a lot of people were guilty of just saying 15% year one, 15% year two, another 15%. So you have like 45% escalator in those, at least in those three years of time that since that Hazen report was put on the street.
And is that, was that what you, without criticizing another company, is that generally what you saw was the difference in, in cost?
I, I didn't go to that, to that level, I'll be honest with you, to go, to go dig into the, to the depth of it, but I just could see, there was definitely an element of that, there's no doubt in my mind that, that they did that, everybody did that, right? When you were trying to say, what's the new price on a plant, well, you knew it wasn't the same thing as it was before COVID, so you had to come up with some number to, you know, you know, get that escalator in there. You know, most of the construction, uh.
So this one here, you look, for ex, and I don't mean to take up a lot of time, but I think these are good questions.
Yeah, I know, I wanna ask a question.
So, when you did these estimates, you looked at exactly how much concrete would be needed for this?
Yeah.
Exactly how much steel would be needed for this?
Right.
These are not generals, the generalities, these are the specifics. Is that what you were trying to say?
Exactly, that's what he's trying to say, is he went and dug deeper down in, you know, we have live numbers from the neighborhood, like we're just doing a plant in Lewisboro, we're looking at what the concrete was costing there, we're just, you know, we're, so we have numbers in the na, area where we can kinda say, okay, here's what it's costing in this area for, for construction right now.
And, quick question, Rich, the number that they're seeing up top, the capital cost, that $14.8 million, that is apples, that meant apples to apples, but that was the number that we were getting proposed, the $28 million that was proposed by Hazen and Sawyer. That number on the bottom, the total NPV, that has nothing to do with the actual capital project. I just wanna make sure that everyone in this audience tonight understands that that is over the lifecycle of that plant, how much it's gonna cost the town to maintain that plant, is that correct? I just wanna make sure that I, I reiterated that correctly.
So you, you did, the capital cost was originally given only by Hazen.
For $28 million.
Well, it raised.
That was how much we voted to bond that night, was 28 million, correct?
It was, their construction was 13 to 16 in the first go-around, 18 to 22 in the second, but when you add the, their engineering fees and when you add the legal cost and the land, uh, acquisition, that's where you got the 16 to 19 in the first go-around and 22.
But what was the final number, it was 28 million?
And 22 to 27 in the second round. What they did from 2020 to when they upgraded their pricing was they hit that, a 40% number, which Avlin was just talking about, hey, all these firms just went in and said, put a, put a, here's an escalation for these years. I didn't know how Hazen did it, but they came in and that's why they came in with that second round of numbers. They did not go into the weeds in their report as Delaware has, as the new RFP requested them to do. They only looked at the one option.
I mean, but should an RFP request somebody to go into the weeds and do their due diligence on their?
It's not, it was, no.
I mean, I'm thinking if I'm paying somebody to do a service for me, I want their best, I shouldn't have to ask them to go and do their due diligence.
An RFP defines a scope of work, the scope of work did not define that scope of work, and therefore it wasn't provided. If we wanted that scope of work, we would've paid extra for it, we didn't ask for that scope of work. When we came back with the supplemental, the supplemental addressed those issues at that time. It's a different, they were two different RFPs. We heard what everybody said, we heard what the board said, the supplemental, RFP that went out addressed those issues to bring it down to the Nats' ass, so to speak, right? Different, different times, we asked for it, we got the first one, they only gave us cost on one. We got cost on five now with lifecycle cost. We didn't have that in the first go-around.
Yeah, I think the other one was just plus and minuses.
Yes, it was, it was just a chart on there, so.
So, uh. Is the total of that total cost, building versus equipment in your report?
In the engineering report.
I think Matt's gonna go through that.
I can't hear.
I, Alan, I, Alan, I just have one last quick question as part of this. You keep on mentioning concrete versus aluminum, and I guess that's also for the lifecycle, if it's gonna be forever, or if it's gonna be like that something has to be redone in like 15 to 20 years. Do all of these options, one, two, three, four, and five, are they all aluminum, where we have to maybe do it in 15 to 20 years again? Or are they the concrete, if I'm getting it right?
For the building itself?
I, I don't know, Alan was saying concrete versus aluminum, so I just.
For the building, it, so they, they might've had a block, what, what, the assumption is they were typically on these plans, you'll have a block building, I'm not sure what.
What, what, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, so.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Are you shocked?
No, that, that's okay, yeah. Yeah, so, so I know you were mentioning about concrete and aluminum.
Yeah.
And I was just wondering, because Glenn was saying concrete will last forever, but the aluminum may have to be redone in some type of a fashion in like maybe 15, 20 years. So my question is with these different one, two, three, four, and five, are they the aluminum ones, are they the concrete ones, like?
This, this is, there's, this is concrete.
Okay.
Aluminum usually lasts quite a while anyway.
Okay.
The real difference is some of the alternatives, like the, the Trident filters and the finer ones, the membranes and the dissolved air filters, those are very mechanical, they have a lot of mechanical components in them.
Okay.
Um, the, the one we're kinda focused on was number three, which was rapid sand filters, which are made of concrete and sand, stainless steel, and they've got, each of them's got about four valves that automatically open them and regulate them and make them work. And then the plate clarifiers, which are just a gravity clarifier. Stuff settles into the bottom of it, you flush it out to the toilet, so there's not a lot of mechanical stuff with that. So that was kinda why we went towards that one.
Perfect, thank you, thank you.
And before you go, before you go on, just, all, all of this, the entire 219-page report will be on the website at the, at the end, so you can read all the details, all the minutia for yourselves.
Do you want to just slide, first the report and then take questions?
Go ahead, ma'am, go ahead.
Yes.
First of all, concrete doesn't last forever, nothing lasts forever. Second of all, you happened to mention, somebody mentioned right at, like, maybe 20 minutes ago, you can only make your plant to a point where it can be handled then by the wastewater treatment. So first of all, are we planning for the future for the more housing that we're gonna be getting? So, which needs an extra volume of water?
Which needs extra volume of water, are we planning for the future, so we don't have a, an issue in 20 or 30 years when these extra houses are being built? And second of all, are we going now down the rabbit hole where we're going to need to upgrade our wastewater, because we're going to need more water, cause one doesn't happen without the other? Everything we pull in, because we have this extra housing, extra population, then it has to get flushed out somewhere. So are you postulating perhaps we're gonna need another wastewater treatment? Because you, you, somebody said, we can only build to the point where it can be handled by the wastewater runoff.
1.1.
Yeah, I think, Rich can answer that for you, yes.
That was me who said that, um, and so, to answer that question, it's a good question, uh, so ultimately, everything does have a useful life expectancy and lifecycle that it has to go through. The wastewater treatment plant cannot be expanded because we're in the New York City DEP watershed, the only way that can really be expanded is through a very arduous process. So we only designed a water treatment plant to meet the capacity of the wastewater treatment plant. The water capacity of that plant, when Hazen did their original study, identified the fact that there is sufficient capacity in Glenida, right now, with the additional buildings that are going up, that we know about, right? So we know about the ones over at the hospital, we know about the ones, uh, uh, we know about the, the distillery, we know about the ones going up at Gateway Fairways, we also had an assessment done by another engineering firm to look at our future capacity on that for the other ones that are being built, potentially built, Centennial Golf Club and the one on Seminary Hill Road. The plant is sufficiently, there's sufficient capacity at the 1.1 million gallons to do that. The, you know, at one point in time, they looked at it and they said, we'll be fine. So we have a report on record that shows us and tells us that right now. So that was done by a different firm. So that, I hope answers your question, so.
Just want to say mine, so, if you were saying watershed water, I'm interested in that factor into your need for filtration, the Croton Line which we're on, didn't need filtration until 10 years ago, no filtration, the Tensile Watership has no filtration at all still.
So, so, it's, while we are on the, you know, we are on that Croton Line, uh, Lake Glenida is a, regulated, it's a, what is it called?
I don't know.
Sorry, it's a regulated water body by New York City DEP, right?
Right.
It's not connected to the system. The only reason why it's not connected to the, the only reason why it's connected to the system is that they put a sluice, sluice way in on the west side of it toward the west branch. We have that water go back and forth to us. If we didn't have that sluice way, we'd be totally independent from that whole system, except it's a controlled lake, controlled lake, that's what it's called, I apologize, controlled lake within the New York City DEP watershed. As such, we buy the water, every one of you buys water, who's in the water district too, buys water from New York City DEP and, and, and New York City actually, the Water Board. You pay the prorata that New York City people pay, so part of the arguments we've had with, over time, we don't get the benefit of all those acriments that they get, filtration, the piping, we have a lake, right? And we have a lake that's in, that's a controlled lake, but we pay the same rate as somebody who gets it all the way in Staten Island. We pay the same, you, meaning I don't live in Carmel, in the water district, but you in the water district pay the same rate as somebody living in New York City. However, that, so that, so the answer is, yeah, that's taken into account, those are all the factors that are in there. These guys, when they looked at it, looked at those numbers, right? They understand what we pay, we keep hard tally of that every year. It's part of when you're paying your O and M, you're paying your capital, right? It goes into that budgeting, our controller looks at that, you know, to, to a very interesting detail. So, and when we, I could tell you, I will ask you, please, stop irrigating your lawns with our water, but that's another story.
I know Charlie has a question, but after, after Charlie, we're going to save public comment to the end of the presentation so these gentlemen can get through the presentation.
Charlie, Charlie.
Come on down here, you know, I probably don't need that, you need it, because I can't listen, I can't understand what you're saying.
Okay.
Okay? And he's sometimes, you know, sometimes the microphone is there, sometimes it's not. Sounds to me, you know, first off, let me say, all these people came down here to learn something tonight. I haven't learned a damn thing. And how long have we been here? I don't know, I've got a watch on. But we've been down here a while, it sounds to me like this town board doesn't know what the hell they want. They're asking questions, the people, some of the people here know what they're talking about, they're asking questions, the rest of us, we thought we were going to learn something and we're not.
Okay, so five plans, every one of those plans is going to give you good water, one-point-one million gallons of good water. They cost a little bit different, each one, because there's different stuff included in them.
You said more now, right, just that few sentences you said, getting on turf all night.
And some of the, and the, these O and M values vary some, because when we're putting in some of this mechanical equipment, you have to plan for thirty years, it's going to fail. Everything, you're, everything's going to fail. Not concrete, the Romans still, still made it, it's still, we still got concrete, that, that'll last, but, but, you know, that's why these vary, these alternatives, the operation and maintenance costs, and there's lost labor on some of them too. We've got two full-time guys, I think, right now running the, 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 yeah, the D plant.
Someone's going to tell us, what about this plant that's there now, that's no good anymore now, right?
It's more expensive to replace than building a new one on top of the hill.
That was option number one.
More expensive to replace it where it is. Where it is to put it up on the hill.
Yeah, because we got to keep it running.
We should have heard that before.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we skipped over that, but.
Say that again?
Where is the hill? I just want to know.
The property up, up the hill, the Marin property.
I'm concerned that. So what we, you got to tell us what the hell the story is here.
What we are recommending is, is alternative number three. It's a rapid sand filter, which is very old-school technology, it's very reliable, it's, has a lot of flexibility for the operator, it doesn't have a lot of mechanical parts. Rapid sand filters are good and reliable and very well-proven.
That's what you're recommending?
Yes, along with plate clarifiers, which are an entirely gravity-driven device, there's nothing mechanical in them. You put the coagulated water in there on these plates and it settles out and sloughs off and you wash it down to the sewer plant. Those are the, and of course, we got to put chlorine in it too to disinfect it, but, but, you know, those are the three things, we're clarifying it, we're filtering it, and then we're disinfecting it so that doesn't kill, doesn't have bad bugs in it.
And you say, but the plant, if we got it now, how long is that good for?
It could fail tonight, it can go another hundred years, I don't know that answer. It's, it was built in nineteen-seventy-six, it's reached its useful life expectancy. I mean, we are replacing things in it quite frequently, hopefully we don't have anything major go on us. So, I, I mean, it's running and you're getting clean water, that, and that's important, right? But again, it needs to be replaced over time.
Let me ask you this, can you stop hooking on to that plant, the plant down there? You hook on the water system all the time, like you just hooked on Centennial.
Centennial's not on yet.
They're not on yet?
No, but they want to be on.
But, who's Toll Brothers, isn't that a part of Centennial?
That's, that's Gateway Fairway, that's the other one.
Two different ones?
Correct.
Well, see, these people don't know that, I don't know that.
Well, I, so, so we're talking, so, so tonight's educational purpose was to go through the, 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 the cost analysis for the supplemental water report and to make a recommendation to the board to choose an option so that we can get a resolution tonight to go and get funding, we are funding, that's grant money, up to five million dollars, right, to help supplement the cost on this. We are here to present that report, these guys are here, Delaware is here, to present the report that this water district two people came for, so that we can get, we are funding in. Now, I will tell you, and I'll caution everybody, we will not get five million dollars next year, because we don't have a design, but we'll have a plan in place and then we're going to do the design, and once we have a design, we go in for wea funding a second time, and because we went in this year and we went in early and we laid the groundwork, which is what we're doing, we should be eligible for some funding up to five million dollars, not guaranteeing the five million, but up to five million dollars. That's the big takeaway that you're going to get from tonight. There's going to be costs associated with it, there's going to be costs associated with any, you could, we could pick any one of those five options tonight. Well, not the seven, because there were seven alternatives, any one of the five that had costs associated with it, we could pick any one of them. But the ones we want to pick is going to be alternative three, which has the lowest capital cost and it has the lowest, it doesn't have the lowest life cycle, but it has the lowest overall cost at twenty-six million dollars. Overall, that's the life expectancy, but the lowest capital cost at almost thirteen million dollars. That's the takeaway. Yes, there's going to be an increase in money that's going to, you're going to have to pay for it. A new plant is going to cost money, they're going to go through that. And ultimately, when we finally get a design completed and we get really good cost estimates, we will then be able to get a better understanding, there'll be a public hearing, you'll be back here, I guarantee you, all of you will be back here, will be a public hearing to present the map plan and report that identifies the alternative being selected and what it's going to cost you over the thirty-year or fifteen, whatever is chosen, right, as the rate that is going to be done. Fifteen will cost you more in the short run, thirty will cost you less, but over time, more, right? So that's just basic mortgaging, right? So that's where we're at. But right now, we're looking, I think we already have a couple of million dollars in hand from federal money, we're hopefully going to get wea money up to five million. So, you know, we're looking at a number now at thirteen million dollars.
It's already a fifteen million dollar savings, so.
So we already have a bunch of savings and what you got to consider, right?
Can we finish the presentation and then everybody will get a chance to talk, everybody will have.
Yeah, let's finish the presentation and we're going to open up public comments.
When he finishes his presentation.
Supervisor's in charge of all these. Supervisor? He doesn't know, he doesn't know why.
Thank you, Charlie.
He's like, hey, he had a bit of instruction, he doesn't know anything about this.
Charlie, Charlie.
Let this gentleman finish and then you can ask him all the questions you want.
Your commissioners of the water district.
Uh-huh.
None of you live in a water district. So what the hell do you know? You know, you shouldn't even be handling it, you shouldn't even be in charge.
That's why we have, that's.
People in charge that are in the water district.
That's why we have engineers to do it.
Who the hell's in charge here?
Okay.
And if it's you, we lost.
All right, well, thank you, and you can get up and have comments after he's done, all right? Let, let, let them finish their presentation and then we can have comments.
Okay, well, speak up so everybody can hear you, speak into their damn microphones and yell if you can.
Nobody can hear you right now, sir, because you're not talking into a microphone.
Vinnie.
All right, we'll talk about the finances now. So this is just a summary of the first five alternatives. So again, the capital costs are the construction costs, engineering, design, permitting, surveying, all the fun stuff, it's lumped into those construction cost numbers along with a thirty percent contingency. And then beneath that, you have your net present value for your O and M and depreciation, which would be your, your energy, your labor, chemicals, replacing equipment that breaks, all that fun stuff. We did recommend alternative.
Explain what O and M means.
Uh, operation and maintenance, sorry. And then depreciation, you know, is not dissimilar, but is specifically an item for equipment repair and replacement. So we'll hop onto the next slide, which is the rate analysis, I'll try to, uh, yep, yep, we'll zoom in. So keep in mind, our recommended alternative was alternative number three. So right off the bat, we have our construction costs, our annual, operation and maintenance costs, and our depreciation. This is done yearly as opposed to the net present value you saw on the other page. If you put those, and this first option is if you were to finance this without a wea grant at a thirty-year, three-and-a-half percent rate alone, and it would assume, assumes it's all financed. So for alternative number three, with no wea grant and a loan, over thirty years, three-and-a-half percent, you would come up with an annual payment of about one-point-three million dollars. If you deducted your current relevant expenses that wouldn't be duplicated, you'd have to come up with seven-hundred-and-four thousand dollars, which would involve increasing your existing tax levy from about one-point-five, two, uh, dollar fifty-two per thousand dollars of assessed homeowner value to two dollars and twenty cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. So you wouldn't be changing your water rates, this would be an ad valorem tax based on your property value. Your mean, um, medium home prices or property values, four-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand nine hundred dollars, so if we're evaluating this based on the medium home price. So alternative three, with no wea grant, you, you'd currently be paying at that rate seven-hundred-and-eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents as your ad valorem tax. The new price would be a thousand thirty-six, it's an increase of three-hundred-and-seventeen dollars or about an increase of forty-one percent, again, without a wea grant.
Per year.
Per, per year, yep. That would be seven-eight, if it's, if you're paying seven-eighteen now, it, you'd be paying an additional three-seventeen per year.
Do you, do you have any comparisons to the costs that were presented by Hazen and Sawyer to do a, a comparison of the two numbers?
For, for the rate impact analysis, I do not have a, an evaluation of the Hazen Sawyer report.
Why weren't, did they give it an opportunity to have these numbers to do an analysis, or you're in this right now? I mean, your report, I'm sure, was prepared in advance to, was it private from us?
No, no, so, so again.
Honestly, let him, let him answer the question.
But I already answered that question.
No, you didn't answer, why weren't you prepared for this particular information? Yeah, I mean, from the financial standpoint. Yeah, okay, yeah.
Why, I mean, we're getting this information right now, I can analyze it, but a lot of people can't, but.
That's fine, again, we, the goal here was to present findings.
Okay.
To get grant money.
That's right.
The, the report is due on Friday, we need the board to make an action.
It's due Friday.
Right, but again, again, this isn't the design, this isn't the final number.
No, but I'm just saying, so we can look at the options as well as you.
Okay, that's fine, the options can change next year for the funding.
We're, we're talking about the seven alternatives, number six wasn't viable, number seven's not going to happen, so we're being exposed to these for the first time, like, right now?
Yes, but again.
And it was prepared, so I don't understand, why wasn't, why, why couldn't we see that?
So, I can, I think I can address it. So basically what was, what, what, I mean, this, this engineering report we put together in, in very short time, it's only a couple, we, we were given three months to put a engineering report together, so they, they weren't some numbers we were hiding away and, and, and gave to them months ago. I, I know, I'm just explaining that, Alan, I got it, I got it.
When was it finalized?
So, it was just finalized, we just got this report over to them just recent, and the, and the reason is, is because this, because we were not expected to put a wea grant in on this project, but we said, hey, you know, if you could get in on this wea grant, you could have a considerable savings to the district, you know, and, and, and we, we may not get that wea grant this year, but the earlier you get in on those wea grants and you get, you know, you get eyes on it and they evaluate it, the next cycle, usually you have a better shot at getting in. So we were kind of pushing to get this into the wea grant.
Is it forecasted?
We, the numbers are the numbers, we're trying to get a wea grant in place.
You don't know if they're going to get the wea grant.
Correct, you never know if they're going to get.
No, these numbers do not include the, the wea grant.
No, that number doesn't include a wea grant.
Ladies don't include. The wea grants, that you're saying we may get, they're not.
That's the next number, we're about to share those, we're about to share those numbers with you.
Okay.
Yeah, so, you want to go?
Go ahead.
So the table below that assumes a five-million-dollar wea grant, which obviously will lower your principal and interest payment, same deal, thirty years, three-and-a-half percent interest rate. That same option three, that would have been forty-four percent without a wea grant, would be twenty-seven percent with a wea grant, and that wea grant can be up to five million dollars.
And these, these numbers are expect.
The board, last time we were here, three-point-five percent on a bond, am I correct, supervisor?
So.
High number as compared to what we were, we were going to pay on a thirty-year bond on a twenty-seven million dollar.
If, if I can.
Let's, let's let them do the presentation, this is all going to be posted, and we can talk about, we're, we're talking, we're talking about numbers, all right, we're, this isn't, this isn't happening today, okay? We haven't even gone out for bonds yet, when we do, then you'll have time to review those numbers and look at what's going on. This is just their quick presentation so that we can vote on a seeker so that they can apply for the grant. We can't get any grant money unless we get to the design phase and get through this. So let's get through the presentation and at the end, you can make your comments, okay?
Did you just tell us what the annual fee, what the change with the, with the grant?
With, with the wea grant, if you're, if you got the medium home price, you're looking, for alternative three, you're looking at a hundred-and-ninety-five dollar increase.
That's all.
And then while we're, while we were talking about the interest rates, the, the financing through EFC, the Environmental Facilities Corporation, is, you know, their, their quote market rate financing is almost always more competitive than what the actual market rate is. So we actually ran through this on, on bonds. I believe your guy's current rate is four-and-a-half percent?
That's what I was told in the last.
Their current rate is four-and-a-half, that's correct.
Right, so right now, the EFC, even if you don't get the hardship, which is zero percent financing or a subsidized rate, you're probably looking at three-and-a-half percent.
Which I believe we're, we're looking at getting the hardship, correct?
That's what we did.
That's what we did.
So as it, Matt, as it stands right now, without the grant, they're looking at three-hundred-and-seventeen dollar increase per year per household. Does everybody understand that?
Yeah.
Without the grant, it's a three-hundred-and-seventeen increase, three-hundred-and-seventeen dollars per year. With the grant, they're saying it's a hundred-and-ninety-five.
Yeah, you're one-third of what we were told last time with finance.
Correct, so, I mean, if you break it down, twenty-six dollars extra a month per household without the grant, sixteen dollars extra per month per household.
And Matt also touched on a really important subject here, he had mentioned the zero percent for the subsidized grant. I'm not sure if many of you remember, a couple of months ago, we did the income survey throughout Carmel Ward District two. That information that was compiled through that survey is what's going to give us the ammunition for us to apply for that subsidized, that zero percent interest.
And that information was used in this report.
Correct.
That they're submitting to wea for the grant. So, you know, there's a lot of moving parts here, we're just trying to present you, present to you the alternatives that are there, preliminary cost for it, we got five million we can get, we have, I don't know how much we had in federal, what did we get with that?
Three, three.
And they didn't include that money in there, right? So they didn't realize, I didn't, I forgot to tell them that we already have a couple million dollars that could be taken off the top on this. So all those numbers will be given to you when we need to go out for bonding, you can ask all your lovely bonding questions that I can't answer when we get there.
So, listen, again, I, we all, I understand how frustrated everyone in this audience is. It's been a long, arduous road to get to where we are right now. But again, we are here tonight to present several different options so that we can, again, get grant funding. The wea grant is very, very important for the cycle, the life cycle of this project. And I understand that this is going to impact every single one of you guys in this audience. That's why, you know, I met with most of you guys at the firehouse several times, and this is why we went out for an RFP, to look at alternative technologies. This is the finding, a lot of you guys came to this town board meeting, went up to that podium, and you wanted more options. These are the options. We're not saying that we're going with any of these options, we're just presenting them to you. It's a, a formality for us to get grant funding for the project, that's all it is. So for, let's, let's, Matt, let's finish the presentation, and then there's going to be public comment, and we'll allow everybody who has comments to come up and ask questions to either the board or to Delaware engineer and/or our town engineer.
We're, we're pretty close here with our, I, I believe, our presentation.
It's just a summary.
So this is just a summary, you know, there, there, there is a need for an action to improve the capacity and, and design of the water treatment plant. We're recommending alternative option three, the plate clarifiers and rapid sand filter. We're recommending alternative option three, the plate clarifiers and rapid sand filter. As Alan has described, it's, you know, there's less moving parts and pieces. It's, you know, it works well to treat the water you have. Um, you know, it's reliable, high-quality water, you know, and will accommodate future demand and, and the regulatory requirements. This next slide here is to talk about the grants, okay? So we have, we've gone through, you know, a lot of evaluating and comparing you guys to see what grants you're available for, are available to you. These are pretty much the only two grants that we've come up with for, for you. One is the WIA, which we've talked about, and, you know, we need to make some actions tonight in order to try to get in to this, this cycle of WIA. The other one is the drinking water relying from, but that's only gonna give you, you know, a rate. It's not gonna give you any free money. So it just may give you a slightly better rate than, than maybe you could get it at a traditional bond. The other, the other thing is, is we may be able to get some, you know, Congress-appropriated funds. That's the only other option. We went...
You can also get state funding, correct?
Right. You can, you can, you can get through stuff through your senators and through your, you know, folks like that. Those were the grants we looked at that you weren't eligible for based on one reason, your income or population. So the only one we really came up with outside of those other two was the congressional direct spending. But to me, the, you know, the WIA is the way to go. Get in front of the WIA. Once we get the WIA, the whole time we should be talking to, you know, your state representatives, trying to get in front of them and just keep asking them, here's where we're at, we're moving forward. You know, it's a real project. That's when you get, you know, a little bit of steam with them, when you're just talking about it and it's still in, in paper form. It's hard to get any traction. They got a million people pulling their ear. So that's, that's sort of our, end of our presentation.
Thank you.
Before the questions, thank you, guys. Thank you for coming, for your time, definitely explaining, you know, our different options, and hopefully we come and get down to the bottom of a better alternative.
Any questions?
No, start here. Kevin, start there. Go this way, please, and then up and down.
Just by putting us in care shot.
Yeah.
Out of the five different proposals, is there one in particular that might utilize a little less chlorine than our present system? Because this past summer, there were days where I would sooner take a cup out of my swimming pool than what was coming out of the tap.
This, I mean, you'll have a newer disinfection system that, you know, will be programmed by a SCADA system and flow pace to hopefully give you the right amount of chlorine at all times. I didn't evaluate how we were doing that right now, but I'm sure it's flow paced. But you have to have disinfection. The only other option would be a UV system, and that wasn't something that was in the system.
As far as the chlorine, what often is the case is that we have to, the operators have to maintain enough chlorine so that there's always chlorine everywhere in the water system. So it may be there's, you know, they have trouble getting chlorine to some distant golf course or something, for example. And so that usually controls the chlorine level, and it may be why it seems a little bit high for you. But we, we, there's a certain amount we gotta, we gotta put in just to kill the bugs, so...
But as part of the upgrade, it would definitely be something you, you would look at and make sure you have correct.
I don't have a question. I just wanna make a comment. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
When all of this started, a year or so ago, we had an estimate for $24 million, and we asked this board, you gotta do better. They went out, they got an estimate, we saving maybe $13 million. I don't know why everybody's complaining. We were talking about $1,100 a year. Now we're down to 150 to $300 a year. I'm more than happy with the results of, of this process. Now, you can pick whatever technically is best for the community, but I, for one, wanna go on record as saying thank you for getting it down to a manageable amount. Thank you.
Just to piggyback on what you're saying, the $27 million should've never been brought here. Okay, so the cost savings, I don't know, I can't say it's a problem with your vetting process or the town engineer, but $27 million was the last time we were here. So to be grateful for something that probably should've never taken place, or maybe the vetting process was totally, I'm not gonna say inept. So now we're here, and I'm gonna ask the question, okay, we have federal money? Is that what, that we have that on hand?
All the one that he said, federal money.
So far, we have a million for design, so far, but now that we...
From, from who?
From federal, from Congressman Lawler gave us...
We have that in hand?
No, we don't have it in hand, no.
So we don't have it in hand?
You don't get federal money or any state money in hand?
Well, I have, I have a statement from you in December 11th, 2024...
Okay, but...
Where you made a quote that we are gonna get 1.4 to 1.5 from Mike Lawler.
Yeah.
Where is it?
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna explain, explain something about...
There's an election in two months from now, and no offense to the politicians, but politicians will say anything to get votes.
Thank, thank you. Let's not get political, let's just...
No, I'm asking, where's the money?
All right. I'm gonna explain to you how government works with...
I understand how government works.
I don't think, I don't think you understand, sir.
Oh, yes, I do.
No, you don't.
Yes, I do.
No. So it's called reimbursement. You have to spend the money and then you get the money. That's, the government doesn't just give you a check unless it's your social security or something like that. But, but thank you for your comments.
No, I'm not finished. I got five minutes, am I correct? I get five minutes. Yesterday, no.
Well, you can ask your question. If it pertains to this process...
To this process, okay, the bonding. Or now you're talking about a loan at 3.5 based upon the five alternatives?
We usually don't do that because we have a double A bond rating, so we usually bond, yes.
Exactly.
But, but this is Delaware Engineering's report. It's not my report.
Exactly. So they should've gotten their information from you guys or the town. And allow me to finish. So...
This is...
So you're really using, in my opinion, as a financial guy, bad information. Have someone who's done capital budgets...
This is, this is, this is the report from the engineering company.
Let Alan explain.
Well, it's based upon, the information comes from, you Rich?
Rich had nothing...
On the funding, on the funding process...
I'm making accusations.
No, I'm not making accusations. I'm asking, where did they get the...
All right, well, let's, let's let Alan explain from Delaware Engineering. They're the ones that presented the, the finding, so Alan, go ahead, Alan.
You wanna know where we got the rates?
Yeah, where'd you get the rates?
We got them from what's the, the EFC usually gives for loan rates.
EFC is...
You don't have a...
Environmental Facilities Corporation.
Okay.
You know government.
No, New York, well, New York State, last time, Commissioner, Supervisor Kazari, you told me, when we had, we have two debt obligations outstanding with them currently, but you told me you don't go to them generally because they're higher.
Yeah, yes.
Because we have a double A bond rate.
Right, yes.
But you're using, and...
I'm not using, they were using in their report.
And our town controller on that $300,000 ban told me the rate was less than 1%. Am I correct?
I, I don't recall what she told you, but, but...
I recall. So now we're talking 3.5 and we're talking...
You're mixing apples and oranges.
No, I am not.
This company is not speaking to the controller.
I'm not talking about the company, I'm talking about where the information come from for them to make this...
They just told you.
They wait, where?
They, they just told you. Are you not listening to them?
You didn't participate in telling them?
No.
Okay, fine. I mean, to me, that's ludicrous.
Okay.
Alan just explained it.
You have to make a decision on them being Delaware Engineering, and they're coming up with financial data that we're looking at. And, and you're gonna use that data, that's my assumption, to make a decision on one out of five, six is not viable, seven is not gonna happen. Am I correct?
The bonding doesn't have anything to do with our decision. Our decision is based on the longevity of the plan and how much it's gonna cost.
But how are you gonna pay for it?
That's not, that's not, their job is not financial.
No, this is your job, I'm asking you.
Yeah, well, we're not to that point.
Can, can Alan please explain, 'cause we're not at that step yet of the process.
No, I understand your side of the question.
I just wanna, I just wanna clarify something, just so it may, may help. 'Cause the, the process that we were, we've done, we were asked as, you know, the, the town board did their due diligence, and in this RFP, they asked us to evaluate funding opportunities and financing for the project. So as part of that component, looking at funding opportunities and financing, the traditional way most municipalities would go through something like this would be to EFC. So that, that's where we get the rate that we presented here, and, and that's how we got to, to that spot. It wasn't a, you know, this isn't the town's evaluation of what the, the costs are gonna be of the project. This is our, you know, part of the RFP response, us looking at what we're being asked to do and, and hitting those tasks that were required as part of the RFP.
So that's not my issue with the board. When we looked at that $27 million proposal from Hazen, it was, a bond was going to be issued. Am I correct?
Correct.
But now, we don't know.
That would've been probably before you had your income surveys done and show, at that time you probably didn't even know that you would've been eligible for a lot of these grants.
We didn't, so at the time that...
And we didn't because nobody applied for it. Am I correct?
That is correct.
No, because our income was too high because they took the entire town's income. That's why we did a income survey of just water, too. But if you would pass the microphone on...
I will pass the microphone.
Because this isn't being productive at all.
So you're, no, I mean, you're saying it's not being, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let him speak.
Because we're not talking about the bonding.
If 100 people filled out the survey and there's 1,700, so how...
No, they went to every house.
And did every house respond?
They took a...
I know some that didn't, so...
Okay, some didn't.
So you're basing this upon an assumption that everybody in the, anyway...
No, we had to reach a threshold of income level.
We got the information that got us here.
You're putting a number, a capital number, and now you're changing your...
Rate...
No, I'm not saying how we're gonna finance it. We didn't change anything. This is their report.
So the next...
Maybe we're putting a bond up, but...
We're not at that point.
All right, can we get...
Because we have a better rate.
There's a lot of people that wanna ask questions. Let's move on to the next question, please.
I have a question.
All right, let, let's move on to the next question.
All right, I have a question. Um, I don't know whether I have misinformation, but I would like to clarify. From what I'm being told, places like the high school, the prison, all of the county buildings are not contributing to this. And if they're not, I wanna know why not.
No, they all pay.
They're connected to what a district too.
So I, I don't know where you got that info. Everybody pays, they all have meters in their facilities, they all pay O and M, they're all in the district, they all pay capital. Everybody's contributing.
For the infrastructure.
For the infrastructure?
They all pay for everything. O and M, capital, infrastructure, and use.
Okay.
They all pay. Nobody has a free ride here, okay? No churches, no jails, no hospital, nobody. Unless you're stealing it from us, then you have a free ride. But nobody's doing that.
Well, not for long.
So actually, Rich, the town bills...
So wait, hold on, we're gonna go down the line.
We're going through the lines here.
So ma'am, the, Rich...
I don't know, Greg, but that's it, but you, there should be a bill, there's a meter in there.
That's usage.
Okay.
Capital, that's a...
If they know, then you should make it before you leave, they give it to us.
Rich, we're, we're gonna go...
Going in order.
Everyone, we have to make this nice.
So, just not exactly pertinent to here right now, but if like our engineer has said, we're only allowed so much wastewater because we're tied into the state, something, something, does that implicate how much population density we're allowed to have considering that each household consumes this much water and has this much waste? So that is something that should be considered as well as a sideline to this, what's going on now. Because my concern was initially, are we building for the future and then with the new construction and everything? But if we're not allowed to contribute to the waste past a certain point, then we shouldn't be approving more housing and more population. So that's a point that needs to be considered by, by the board and, and future building because if we can't do the wastewater, then we can't do the buildings.
Yes.
Thanks. John Butler, I've spoken a lot about this issue. Uh, I wanna clarify portions of this process that occurred last year, just so everyone is crystal clear on what happened last year during this process. So the $27 million proposal from Hazen was in fact voted upon by this town board. Supervisor Kazari voted in favor?
I was not here, just, just to clarify that as well.
It's okay.
Just wanna let everybody know here I was not on the board.
Mike, he's gonna go down the line.
It's okay.
Just so you all know.
Mike, he's gonna go down the line, don't worry.
It's okay, I got you, man. I got you covered, don't worry about it. Councilman Lombardi voted for it. Councilman McDon, Councilwoman McDonough voted in favor of it. I was at this meeting, I was sort of stood up and said something, and I said, hold on a second, there's a whole bunch of things wrong with it. $27 million. Three of the board members voted in favor. To his credit, and I've said this many, many times before, Councilman Kearns sat back, thought about it, and voted no. And because our newest representative was not on the board at that time, that enabled this entire $27 million proposal to stop dead in its tracks. If that had not occurred last year because of Councilman Kearns' foresight, we wouldn't be having this meeting. We'd be paying $27 million.
Right, that's right.
Okay? Are we all clear on that?
Yes.
Now, I noted, I, I did hear Councilman Lombardi's comments about, hey, wait a second, we were given data from Hazen and Sawyer. And I'm, this was not said, but I'll make the presumption for a second that, hey, we had this information, we had this data, and therefore I based, or we based our decision to vote in favor of this proposal based on that data. Well, now, based on the presentation tonight, it's clear and it's obvious that that report and those services and that data was defective. Not defective, as you said, in a little way, but in a big way. Big, big, big. So my question, number one, is what did we pay Hazen and Sawyer? How much did we pay Hazen and Sawyer for their defective data?
I don't have that data here in front of us.
About, approximately.
$300,000 was the number last time.
Okay.
$300,000, $400,000?
Mary Ann, do you know offhand?
180?
About 13,000.
13,000?
About 13,000.[1661.82]
For all the work they did over the years? The whole project? Well, let's just say $300,000 or thereabouts. I want my money back. And I'm not kidding. I want my money back. So I think it would be totally appropriate, given the circumstances of not a little error, but a big error, that this is corporate, not corporate, this is negligent product on their behalf, and I think we should tender a claim against them for all the money that we paid to them. And I think that should be done immediately, and I would like to have someone show cause as to why not. That's my comment.
Thank you.
No, I was just curious. The engineer mentioned Toll Brothers and another contractor building all these new homes like up at Centennial and everywhere else. I'm not sure where the lines are in District Two. Are they included in the district, all this new construction that's going in?
Yes, Steve, that is.
Are they kicking in for this thing?
Yes, everybody, they all have to pay. And like our engineer, Rich Franzetti, said, there was a different engineering company, not Hazen and not Delaware, that went out and did the assessment on what would be, how far could there be development? How much housing, how much business? And then the planning board uses that information. They aren't going to let us go beyond that scope of what is available, just like we don't add anything if there's not enough water capacity here. In the other water districts, they don't let a development go in if there's not enough water for it.
Okay, so all the, so the numbers that you've presented up here, you figured in the potential or the income, the tax income that's going to come from these new homes? To come up with the prices that we're going to pay, the amounts that we're going to pay per year?
I don't think so. I don't think so. I don't think so.
Not, I don't, yeah.
That wasn't included.
The 400 and something that are there now, the new ones, I don't believe that would have been because Delaware wouldn't have-
But they're going to tie in, so we're all paying for the, all these new homes to tie in?
Well, they have to pay, when you join the water, when you build a new home, you have to pay capital costs to connect. So, so they will, at that time, they will pay, and at that time, those costs would reduce actually the costs that everyone else would pay. They're not included.
Then what we're putting in and our taxes would come down when they start to contribute?
That, not right now. The number that we presented that you would pay for the increase would be less because they would then be included in that number. Does that make sense?
Right now, though, it's at Avaloram, right, Mayor? Marianne? It's at Avaloram?
Yes.
So right now, those properties, those property owners are paying water and sewer taxes and not getting a benefit from it. So, they are already contributing. Once those individual houses get in there and it gets broken down accordingly, then they're going to pay their fair share of the capital for all that, this bonding and whatnot as they go forward.
Did you get anything out of the home builders, Toll Brothers, and did they kick in?
They, no, they're gonna, no, they're getting their money from-
We got Kamada Park, he kicked in.
Again, that's, I'm not here to discuss that. We're here to talk about a water plan.
He's going to buy the land, at least.
Thank you, Steve.
One of my questions is how is this going to affect our water bills? Because I was once told that New York City only allows us a certain amount of water, and then anything over that, we would be priced accordingly for more. When the, when the distillery was going up, they, it was something like 600,000 gallons or something of water they were going to use, and we would have had to pay double at the time for that. That was, I was told that at a water meeting that I came to. So how is this affecting with all these new places coming in and all of this? How is that affecting our water bill?
Is this capacity increasing?
So, again, as I explained earlier, there's a prorata that we pay, which is similar to the ones in New York City. I explained it to the gentleman in the back over there. He's not here now. So, you pay a certain rate as a homeowner, as an individual. If we go over that, what is the prorata, the prorated form as from New York City, you pay in addition, you pay a vig on it. You pay an additional fund, money on it, right? So, when I said before, that most of these new developments, they are not allowed to have irrigation connected to our water. Irrigation is a no-no on the grand scheme of things, right? So, because that just wastes water. So, yeah, I mean, it would be, they use conservation methodologies, low-flow flush toilets. All that happens with all this new development. And, yeah, it's a matter of usage. In the summer, we typically go over what the New York City allotment is. In the winter, we don't. Makes sense because everyone's either watering their garden or filling their pool or doing something, right?
But more people, we still have the same amount of water, so we're going to get charged more because of that.
If we go over, right now, we've been blessed. We haven't been going over that New York City rate with all the new development that's in there, but I can't promise that won't happen in the future.
All right, well, that was-
Or doesn't need to approve any more housing.
Right. We don't want no more housing.
That's a question.
Hi, gentlemen from Delaware, I got a couple of questions regarding your alternatives. First thing is, are the filters, are they all gravity filters or are they pressure filters?
The sand filters?
Yes. And where I'm going with this is, as you get further into the process, from being in the industry and we've met, from what I seeing, and these are rough numbers, the building is probably going to cost two and a half to three times what the actual equipment is going to cost. So, if we were to go with pressure filters, is there a possibility of shrinking the building? Yes, we're going to have to pay for the pumps and the electricities, but is that something to be considered which could lower the overall capital cost?
Now, DOH will no longer approve pressure filters.
Okay.
We've did it in the past, and I checked again, and they stopped a few years ago approving the pressure filters.
Okay.
They had problems with them short-circuiting and not-
Okay, so, so the regs have changed, and that brings us to the next question is, and kind of for everybody. We talk about coliforms, but now New York State has had for a number of years cryptosporidium. How many crypto credits are we getting in alternative three?
What's the question?
Crypto credits?
Are we getting any crypto credits?
We're getting the required amount. I don't know.
So Will-
I think it's five, five credit, five units log removal for crypto.
There's going to be five locks, so no additional equipment is going to be needed to meet the crypto requirement.
We meet the crypto. It's, it actually takes longer to meet the giardia than it does the crypto. The viruses get inactivated very quickly.
Okay.
And we did look at UV as a possibility, but it just really wasn't worth the cost and the energy is significant from it, and there's a lot of maintenance that's required on it, so.
Well, I run a UV company, so let's just say, let's agree to disagree. But the other thing is, I'm also one of the county legislators, and to the best of my knowledge, the county does not pay any taxes to the town of Carmel. And there was a letter, which I published, saying that the highest number of users on any given day are in the county buildings, the county office building, the jail, the sheriff's department, the Donald B. Smith campus, the senior centers, et cetera. And one of the things that I think that we really need to do is we need to see if the county is willing to chip in. I mean, a one-shot, couple of million dollars would be very beneficial to everybody here. And, and this is more directed to everybody in the room. Write the county.
So, I believe, I'm just speaking with our town attorney here, the county does pay an Avaloram tax in the special districts. Isn't that correct?
Okay, because we've never seen it in a county budget, just so you know.
Yeah, even the churches pay that. No one's exempt from that tax. Correct?
Yeah, everybody's-
The special districts do not qualify for the exemption. Basic town tax is exempted, but not the special districts that are value-based, not unit-based.
Thank you. And the other thing which I touched on before is you're, within your report, you're going to have a breakdown of how one particular alternative may have a smaller building versus another kind of a-
Well, all the buildings are sized in the report.
I'm sorry?
The sizes of the buildings are all in the report.
Okay, and off the top of your head, was bill, was alternative three one of the smaller buildings?
I wrote the number down. It's 88 by 55 feet is what they showed on the drawing before, but I don't have the comparison between the others.
So now, now the other one, you know, it wouldn't be, because the other one had clarifiers outside, so they wouldn't be inside the building.
Right.
So that building's probably a little smaller, but, well, most of the other buildings were pretty similar in size.
A lot of what controls the building two is, there's a, for the disinfection, you have to have the chlorine in contact with the water.
Right, the clear well.
So it's a contact tank size. I mean, you baffle it, you do whatever you can to it. But it's still a lot of water and the pH, you know, is pretty high, pretty, so.
This question is for Mr. Kern. You talked about grant money and surveys. Is the survey actually being done?
The survey was already conducted several months ago. There was communication sent out on behalf of the town of Carmel. I think our grant writing service team actually was out on foot knocking on doors. We did perform the income survey that we are using for this WIA grant that we are going to adopt tonight, hopefully adopt tonight.
Who follows up on this survey?
The survey was-
For the town?
So the survey was done by G and G, which is our grant writer.
Who follows up in the town?
So, we are right behind you. We have our chief of staff, Kevin Kernan, and as well as all the members on this board here. We've been a part of the process throughout the whole, the whole process.
Well, I happen to know that they don't hit everybody for this survey.
So, it's-
It's just handpicked people, right?
It went to every house.
It's not handpicked. It's a blanket survey, so they send out notifications throughout to all the residents.
They're supposed to send stuff out, and you're supposed to get it in the mail, or they're supposed to knock on the door?
Yeah, they did all the above. Some, some individuals received, some individuals participated, some individuals did not.
I haven't been out of town. You know, nobody stopped at my house.
Yeah, I can't, I can't, I can't speak if they did or did not, but I do know that they did gather a abundance of information that they were, that was very useful, that we were able to utilize.
Maybe you should ask for a show of hands here, people who received the survey. How about doing that? To give you an idea.
Kevin, do you have the number?
So you know what I'm talking about.
Do you, off the top, I know, it's off the top of your head, but do you have a number of how many individuals participated in the survey? We can, Charlie, we can, Mr. Cole, we can get you that number. Mr. Cole, we can get you the number of participants who participated in the survey.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Some people didn't want to participate.
How's it going? Bray Harris, two questions, one for the engineer. How much of the population trends, I'm sure you considered all of them, but from 2020 to Hamlet overall, the population has sort of declined actually a little bit. So, all of these five alternatives, how much of the population trends are you guys looking at in terms of the capacity that's going to be needed? And I think I heard you say, and Councilwoman McDonough brought this up, right? The aluminum versus concrete, the aluminum's going to have a shorter lifespan, or how much does that play into that?
The, so the plan is being sized basically off of what you're permitted to do and what your increased capacities were in the RFP that we were, which is one point line. So that, you know, that's what the plan is sized for, and that's what all these plans take into account.
Okay.
The, our, the buildings we're designing are all using concrete for the structural portions of the buildings. Where I think we're getting a little mistaken is sometimes the tankage that you would use or a component that you would use can be made out of steel versus concrete, and that's where you can see the savings.
And the lifespan on all five options is roughly around what I saw at the bottom, where it was talking about, you know, the return rate, you know, 30, over the course of 30 years.
30 years.
Is that what we expect the lifespan to be?
That's what you should expect a life cycle of.
And then, for the board, I know the WIA grant is something we're really hoping for, and I know there's a multi-step process and maybe even a multi-year process to get that. What is, if any, the backup plan for if we don't get that? I know we saw the cost without any additional funding and what the total burden would be on the taxpayer, but is there an alternative funding plan that you guys are considering? The county may pay, you know, into the special district tax, but they don't pay all property taxes. They are sitting on $90 million. Is there any way that, there is a way to work with the county? I know there's a sales tax redistribution effort, you know, that we've all kind of pushed for. Is there money that could be earmarked from that when it comes back to the town? Just looking at all these different possibilities, I don't want to know that we don't get the WIA grant and now we're kind of, you know, stuck with everything. I want to just know we're exploring all the options.
I, I think I can speak with confidence that everyone on this board will look at all alternative path to finance this project. So, I know the gentleman from Delaware Engineering had said, you know, our state representatives, our federal representatives. We also have a grant writer that is, that works on behalf of the town of Carmel. So I'm pretty confident that every single one up here will look for alternative paths of financing if we do not meet the requirements for the WIA grant. But I think we're pretty hopeful, and I think, again, nothing's guaranteed, like several individuals have said now. But, you know, with the information that we gathered with that, that low income, the income survey, we're pretty confident that we're going to be able to, you know, put it to good use.
Does anything prevent us from doing the WIA grant and versus the WIA grant or? And what I mean by that is-
Can you say that one more time?
If we get the WIA grant, let's say we get that, can we also pursue-
We can apply for everything that we can get.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're going to apply to them as well as ask the congressman, the state assembly, and the senate.
And the two senators.
We're going to, we're going to ask everyone for every penny we can get.
What our grant writers do is they actually look at multiple possible grants that we could fit into.
Okay.
And then they will write those grants specific to our need with the hope that we-
And then please just don't forget the county. $90 million on assigned fund balance. So, we'd love to see those tax dollars come back local, so ask, you know.
So would we. We'd love it too.
So would we.
We would love it too.
I got you. You guys know. I'm there with you. Who's next?
The next, yep, down your row.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mark Rickchand on 20 College Drive, Carmel, water district number two. A couple of questions. I was on the board when we originally were going through this. I know the building was a lot bigger originally. I believe it was around 90 by 200 feet. So now, looking at the options, I'd say sound a lot, much better. I'm glad that we revisited this. There were a lot, a lot of upscale pricing during COVID. It was tough. We didn't get a lot of people bidding on these projects, so I'm glad that we revetted this. Question is, what's the aesthetic going to look like on the building? Is everything going to be inside the building, outside the building? I know where the property is. When will you start working on it? Will you start clearing the property, preparing it for the, for the project? And then another problem that we have here is we always, we have these great ideas, great projects. We pay a lot of money to our consultants, and nothing gets off the ground. When are we going to start the project, and when do you expect it to be finished? That's my question.
So, I can't answer to when we would start the construction. I mean, you'd want to get your, you know, design takes usually about a year to get through the design of a project of this nature. Hopefully, we get the WIA grant at that time, then you bid it sort of a few months of bid time, and then you got about a year, a little over a year of construction. So if you were to hit go, you know, you're looking at about a two and a half year window before you actually have a building. To answer your question of aesthetics and things, that nothing would be outside of the building under the option that was selected, that we recommended. The other options obviously had those tanks outside for clarifiers. There would be domes. You know, the, the character of the building will be pleasing. I wouldn't say it will be, you know, an architect's dream, but we can certainly make a nice, pleasing building.
Good evening. During this process, we're talking about the new building and new, new water pumping station and such. Have we already purchased where, I guess the nuns used to live? Or they were, is that the property we're talking about in Carmel? Where the old-
The Maron property across from the funeral home.
Okay, very good. So I know that. What about the three tanks we have in town? I know they've been up on the farm property as long as I can remember, and that's 75 years. Are they in part of this refurbishing, or are we in need of new tanks?
So, you're talking about our three storage tanks?
Yes.
So we've already replaced one on Everett Road, and there's still the existing one, let's say the old one, that's going to be re-put back into service. Part of tonight's agenda is we're going to be, I'm asking the board to vote on mandatory water restrictions because we're going to be starting the tank project in the next month or so, right? So, in what the first, the first tank they'd be looking at is the one behind ShopRite called Clapboard Ridge. What they're doing with that is they're going to clean it. They have to empty it out, and they're going to clean the inside. They're going to make it meet code. And once they do that, they'll have a pneumatic tank there to keep pressure through the system. Then they're going to go, and the Lindy tank will be taken out of service, right? And the Lindy's tank will be completely demolished, removed, replaced. And once, once, again, pneumatic tank will be placed into service, we'll still have two Everett Road tanks and a Clapboard tank. The other way around, we'd have Lindy tank and two Everett tanks with Clapboards out of service.
So we can exist with two rather than three?
Yes, you'll exist with two with a, with what is, it'll look like a big old missile silo parked there that says pressurized water on it. It's a, it's a pneumatic tank that maintains pressure through the system. It'll be parked up near Clapboard. It'll be parked up near Lindy. And then, when that aspect of the project is done, we're going to drain the Everett Road tank, the second one, the original one, and demolish that. That's part of this project. And then you'll have three new tanks, I'm sorry, two new tanks in the district along with, well, the Clapboard Ridge is fairly new, so.
So that's included?
No, not this project. That's going on now.
All right.
That's been bonded. That's been looked at, so that's part of the bonding you're paying for right now.
Very good.
So the project is completed?
When is that?
Year and a half? Year, year and a half. Year and a half. Year, year and a half, year and a half.
So we have to run restrictions for the entire district.
Yes.
And we're finding out about this two weeks before they go into effect.
They're going into effect in two weeks, but they're not taking the tank out of service. There'll be notices on the webpage that identify when we're starting the project. I'm asking for it now. To be proactive. Look at that. I'm being proactive.
Uh, yeah, okay, Rich, that's very clever. But just, this is the last agenda item, but since it's being talked about, why not?
It's going to be here now because everybody.
Yeah, I I get that. So you're saying that there'll be water restrictions.
Mandatory.
Mandatory water restrictions.
Correct.
For the entirety of Carmel Water District Number Two.
Correct.
As if there was a drought, same sort of restrictions.
Correct.
And there's a nine, ten bullet point list of the restrictions involving swimming pools and all other stuff.
Correct.
And that's going to be in effect. Shoulder shrug, a year and a half, maybe, could be more, two years.
Could be less.
Yeah, it could be more. So there's a water restrictions.
Yes.
And does, and we're going to find out about it when they, in two weeks when they go into effect.
You're finding about it tonight, John.
Oh, okay, but they're going in effect in two weeks.
But they're.
So we got fourteen days of warning about this.
Can I finish or are you going to keep talking?
No.
Okay, good.
No, I'll keep talking.
Kevin, thank you.
So.
Rich, did you want to finish telling something?
So so the mandatory water, I'm asking the board to vote on it, to act on it next week. They're not going to go into effect truly until the beginning of November when the project gets into full swing, when they're draining the Clapboard Ridge tank. That's how it's going to work. They'll be working on the Lindy tank in the springtime when they take it down and do it, and it should be completed. A year and a half would be the worst it would be, right? It probably will be less. I will have a better understanding when I get there. But I'm being proactive, as I mentioned, to make sure that everybody here who is in Water Two, and you all have your interconnections and talking, everyone talks, that you're aware that there'll be these mandatory restrictions because you'll be short a tank. Clapboard Ridge will be empty and running on a pneumatic tank. And when that happens, we should really be conserving water and watching what we do.
Rich.
And when we take the Lindy Road tank out, then that's going to be completely removed. That takes a little longer to take care of and fix. Make sure that we're not using water. That's why they're going to be put into effect.
No, you go first.
New construction's coming about. During that period, are we moving along with that as well? They're hooking up while we're on water restrictions?
Yeah, they'll be able to hook up. The pneumatic tanks, the way the system has been designed is that those pneumatic tanks will function as the tank is actually in service. Remember, we still have an extra Everett Road tank. We have three tanks that'll always be in service. Versus when we did Water District Eight right next door, we had two tanks. One of them was completely out of service. We had no issues. We have a one water tank off a groundwater system in Water District Three. We had two pneumatic tanks there. One tank completely out of service to do the work on it. There were no issues. Mandatory restrictions were put into place in every water district where we did tank work. It it'll, well, they're going to, the board's going to vote on it next week. They don't need to vote on it tonight unless they want to. I'm not asking them to do that. And then it'll be posted on the webpage. It'll, we'll send a letter out to everybody in the district. And that's, that's where we'll be. And it'll be there. You can keep calling, but we'll keep going with regards to what's on our, you know, our webpage. We're two-week look aheads on that.
Real quick. Rich, now, with the pneumatic tank, do you have lines that are coming off of that tank? How is, what's the the structure look like? I have seen the tank before, but I'm just trying to visualize how you get the water from the tank to the system. Is there lines?
It goes to a high, a localized hydrant right there.
So is that?
If you feeds it, it pressurizes it, goes back into another hydrant.
So is there any concern with that being done over the course of the winter with freezing temperatures and water freezing?
They probably, I have to, we don't have the schedule yet on this, right? So we're going to get that schedule. They'll work on Clapboard first, which could be done before the snow flies, and then they'll probably take it out of service, do the work in the spring, right, for Lindy tank. And then we should be done probably by the end of the summer.
So.
But I'm I'm caveating. If you remember what happened in Water District Eight, right, we, both tanks had crappy floors on them, and we had to delay the project longer for that.
So when you put the other tanks back into service, will the restrictions be lifted?
Yes, when the tanks are back in service, the restrictions will be lifted.
Okay.
So so just information quick, Gloria, then I'll let you say something. As far as the mailer goes, the grant writer in January until May of this year sent out two thousand six hundred and something parcels to every, every one of those places. There were some streets that reported back to the town that they never received their mail. So another half as many were mailed out. We received seven hundred thirty-five back in the mail and four hundred and eighty responses by going door to door. They went out to people that didn't answer. So a total of one thousand two hundred thirty-three of the two thousand six hundred responded about the income survey. So it was forty-six point seven percent, which is enough to meet the threshold, to meet the grant, that we had enough respondents and that the income level was low enough that we'll be able to get grant money. Because now they're not comparing us to the people with those big houses. They're comparing it to the, you know, raised ranches and ranch houses that we have up in Water Two. I just wanted to say that. So Gloria, what did you want to say?
I just wanted to ask, are we allowed to ask a question that doesn't pertain to any of this?
At the end of the meeting.
No, no, we're done with the public comment. Go ahead.
All right. I'll wait for the end.
I know. Okay.
Like, we did enough public comments. No, go ahead.
You go ahead. You could, you could ask.
Why don't you go over here and say it so that the people at home don't yell that they didn't hear what you said?
My name is Gloria. I live on Fair Street in Carmel, and I have a little bit of an issue with the Fair Street construction. So for the last three days, I have not received my mail. So today I took a trip up to the post office and spoke with the postmaster, and she has told me that she's not delivering mail to us because of construction. And not only is there construction on Fair Street, but it's everywhere, and she's very frustrated now. So she said I have to come to the post office during the day to get my mail, which I am not going to do. And I need one of you people to straighten that out, because we should get our mail every day. My mailbox is still there. It's not moved. They can still put mail in it. We have one of the worst mailmen in the county, so he's just a very lazy kid. So I'm assuming that's the problem, but.
So you know the Fair Street project, that's a county project?
I don't, I don't care what.
I'll reach out, Gloria.
I just want my mail.
I'll, I'll reach out to the.
I, I'm aware of everything pretty much, but county or town, I don't care anymore.
Well, there's a difference.
Yeah, I know. But I'm just saying, somebody has to fix it.
Yeah, I, Mr. Elner is in the back. I'm sure if you give him a, he'll be able to help you out. He's a county legislator for
Your district.
For your district. So if you speak to him, I'm sure he can maybe help you out.
Okay. Also, I don't know if you guys have traveled Fair Street lately, but it's getting a little bit crazy. Again, should I speak to him about it then?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. So could somebody? Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, I think Pat said he's going to add that. Yes. Great suggestion.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Nope. So. So can, can, do we want to start down there?
Let's start.
Yep.
And Mike? Councilman Lugo, would you read this resolution making a determination pursuant to seeker for Carmel Water District Number Two, please?
Whereas the town of Carmel Water District Number Two is currently served by a single water treatment plant, WTP, constructed in nineteen seventy-six, located at seventeen forty-four Route Six in the Hamlet of Carmel. And whereas predicted increases in water consumption are expected to approach or exceed the plant's existing capacity, and the plant's treatment equipment is aging and relies on outdated and ineffective filtration technology. And whereas the proposed action involves constructing a new water treatment plant on an adjoining parcel, demolition, an existing residential building, and permanently decommissioning the existing water treatment plant. And whereas the town board began its review of the project on August sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, by classifying the action as an unlisted action and declaring its intent to serve as lead agency for an uncoordinated review in accordance with the requirements of Article Eight, Part Six One Seven of the Environmental Conservation Law Seeker. And whereas the town board has reviewed Part One of the Short Environmental Assessment Form attached hereto and a part hereof, completed Parts Two and Three of the EAF, and reviewed the requirements of the seeker and other information in the record and respect to the project. And now therefore be it, be it resolved that in consideration of the foregoing, the Carmel Town Board hereby determines that the project will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and a negative declaration is hereby issued. I offer this resolution as read.
Second.
Greg, could you do this? Councilman Lugo?
Yes.
Councilman Kearns?
Absolutely.
Councilman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilman Lombardi?
Aye.
Yes, thank you.
Most carries. Just a, if I can, Gloria? Hello? Gloria? Hi, so I just got a text message from someone in the congressman's office who said that they will be more than happy to assist you with the post office issues. All right?
Waller's office.
No, it's, it's going to be taken care of. All right, you're welcome.
Good job. That's one less call for me. The next one is accepting and adopting this engineering report from Delaware for Water, Carmel Water District Number Two. Councilman Lombardi, could you read that for us?
Whereas the town board of Tana Carmel had received a draft report from Delaware Engineering DPC, which was provided to evaluate the existing Carmel Water District Number Two municipal water treatment system, to recommend strategies to increase treatment capacities and to serve as a supplement to the prior report for Carmel Water District Number Two, prepared by Hazen and Sawyer dated January, excuse me, dated twenty twenty. Now therefore be resolved, the town board of Tana Carmel, Ecton's Commissioners of Carmel Water District Number Two hereby accept and adopt the report of Delaware Engineering DPC. And be it further resolved that a certified copy of this resolution accompanying any grant or funding application which may be submitted in connection with any capital upgrade projects for the Carmel Water District Number Two water treatment system. I offer this resolution as read.
Second.
Councilman Lugo? Councilman Lugo?
Yes.
Councilman Kearns?
Yes.
Councilman McDonough?
Yes.
Councilman Lombardi?
Aye.
Supervisor Kazari? Yes, thank you. Gentlemen, thank you very much for the presentation and all that diligence that you put into that. That, that was really good. Thank you.
Thank you guys so much. Yeah, thanks, guys.
Safe travels.
So Rich, while you're here, sit down. Let's, let's do, let's do, well, let's start with number ten first. Do your water restriction.
So as I mentioned earlier, water tank rehabilitation project in Water Two will be starting in a couple of weeks. The project details draining each water storage tanks and internal work may be performed, and the replacement of the Lindy tank may take place. The tanks provide storage and supply water for Water Two. The temporary pneumatic tank will be in place once the work commences and will be mobilized as pressure is needed. In order to protect the integrity of the water systems, recommended that mandatory restrictions be put into place as a resolution for our town clerk to have and and a notice to the, notice to the residents regarding the restrictions. We will post this on the webpage and contact Highway and Safari Department and alert them of the restrictions. So I respectfully request this be offered next week.
And like you said, we have the three hundred and fifty thousand old Everett Road still functioning.
Correct.
And we added, what, five hundred or seven fifty?
The other new tank is five hundred thou, and so, and the new Lindy tank will be five hundred thou when it's put back in place.
So really, we still have, we'll have three tanks going.
Always.
Which shouldn't be an impact.
Right.
Because you had three tanks.
You'll have the volume. It's just a matter of keeping the pressure, so.
Right.
Rich, I just had a question on one of the suggested prohibitions. Number three, the bleeding of supply lines for the purpose of maintaining a constant flow to prevent freezing.
That's codified. That's in our code.
I understand, but if it's the wintertime and, you know, I'd rather them use a little bit of water than prevent their pipes from freezing and then cost them a significant amount of money.
Again, this is, this is straight out of our code, so I, so Greg, what we do with that on the grant team?
Well, we didn't vote on it yet, so we can.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought this is very similar to the question I asked you earlier about what is your plan through the winter months? I thought you said that you were going to, you were going to pause.
I don't have that schedule yet, so I, they're starting with Clapboard Ridge. They should be able to get that done in relatively short order. I may come back to you shortly and go, let's rescind these and go back in the spring and put them back into effect.
So.
So well, I don't, right now, I don't have that schedule from them.
Should we wait to get that schedule before we vote on this?
I, I, I can ask for that schedule. I, we don't have, we can issue them. I just, again, I'm, I'm being proactive to make sure that we have this done. I can get a firmer schedule from the, from the contractor. I'll ask them for it tomorrow and see what we get, right, but.
Will we be able to get it within, before we vote on it?
Yeah. I'll ask, I'll ask them what their intention is to have here, you know, what we're doing. Because I think Clapboard will be done, like I said, they're starting to work on Clapboard this week, but just clearing the outside, doing the fencing, doing all the work they need to do, so. But they'll go straight into clearing out, emptying that tank and doing it. And once I get it, if I don't need it for next week, we'll do it in the future, so. Just being proactive with it.
Thanks for.
So you want to do number five, the fence at Teakettle Lake?
So you're getting rid of me. I got you.
Well, you're sitting there.
I'm here. I'm joking with you.
Economy of.
Economy, yes. Teakettle Lake is, District Advisory Board received quotes to install fencing at Teakettle Lake. Quotes were received from AMG Royal, Northern Fence in Campanella, ten thousand eight hundred, eleven thousand three hundred thirteen, nine twenty-five respectively. The quotes include removing of the existing chain link fencing and installation of a split rail fence. It's recommended, and as recommended by Dan Pierceall, who is the Chair of the Board there, that, that we use AMG Royal Fence for this. Suzie asked for some questions. She asked earlier before the meeting about a warranty, so we'll, I'll make sure that there's a warranty included with it.
Thank you.
And then emergency repairs.
I'm sorry, Rich, is, is post and rail the same as pressure-treated split rail?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I needed to know.
So Carmel Sewer District Two leak?
So this memo is being presented to the board for emergency invoices submitted and authorization that exceed ten thousand dollars. In Carmel Sewer District Two, this is going back to early July, it's ten eighty-one Stone Lay, June twenty-eighth, actually late June. There was a leak in front of ten eighty-one Stone Lay. Infomart, the operators, Evan Septic and Cook Excavating worked until two AM, and were able to find the cause of a leak. On Sunday, June twenty-ninth, they arrived on site to continue digging. The sewers was leaking out of an unmapped valve, which had the bolts rotted out where the leaking was occurring. The valve was part of a forced main system, which is part of the collection system with the four pump stations in the system. The leak was completed. Restoration of the site, blacktop curving lawn was performed on seven one, seven twenty-two, and seven twenty-eight. There's an invoice from Cook Excavating to perform the restoration of this project.
Okay.
So this is the consent order one is next. Greg, I think that's yours. I don't have that memo. Do I?
I'll take it.
No, I do. I do have it, yeah. So Greg, you want to just take it, though?
Yeah, there's a consent, order on consent that was entered into in two thousand nineteen for Carmel Water Sewer District, Sewer District Number Five, which is Hildale.
Yep.
On a Carrie Street. The DEC had required that the, because of where the affluent discharge point was located, that there be treatment for ammonia. In the six years that it ensued, DEC has moved the goalposts two or three times and required that we treat for phosphorus. So this is the Second Amendment that pushes out the deadline dates for a design and a completion of the plant. And what it is, basically, we have to have a preliminary engineering report within two years of this modified, second modified order being signed. And the plant's got to be in operation within five years, which is within, we already have a facilities report and a design originally that was probably eighty percent complete.
But then they changed it.
And then, yeah, correct, and then.
And they moved the goalposts.
Changed the treatment requirements. There was an issue with the capacity or the, the daily flow. But between the consulting engineer and the engineer's office, we're confident that the deadlines are fairly liberal for DEC and that we'll be able to meet them, but we do have to reflect it in a second modified consent. consent order, and that's what, there'll be a resolution on it next week for you to consider.
Thanks.
Sure.
And then Villa Barone, another 10-year project?
The New York State DOT requested that the attached form, it's Form RRFB-01-725, be submitted as part of a previously submitted permit documentation and agreement for the reference. The Board may recall resolutions for these agreements were approved in November of '24. The form just needs to be signed by the supervisor and submitted, nothing else is changing on the project, so.
Right. Go ahead.
So Rich, oh, I'm sorry, I just sort of said, I know it's just like the rectangle flashing thing, who puts it on and off? Villa Barone, when they have a function?
So, so they're going to have theirs, we're going to have ours, and it would be PD would be able to control it, it'll be a remote controlled PD one, that's the idea. So they'll be, so when they, so when there's police presence there, we'll be able to control it on either end, the police department, and Villa Barone will be able to do the ones directly across their parking area to the front of their building.
Okay.
Right, and you remember, this is, this is after the deputy sheriff was hit by the minivan standing in front of, yeah, so 10 years ago, 11 years ago, and it's taken this long to get DOT to...
Yep.
It's scary, but that's New York State.
The traffic there, it's a high, it's a high speed road.
Yeah. Yeah, and we asked them to reduce, we asked them to reduce the speed limit there, we've asked them a lot of things in that spot, and they've gotten anywhere.
They pay for that.
They pay for it.
That's paid for.
The town, town does not, we don't not pay for it.
We charge.
And they got some grant money for this from, I think, Harkam.
Senator Harkam, yeah.
That's a long time ago.
Might have been Harkam, it was Harkam.
But they do, they do pay for the additional police presence.
Yeah.
Last one, number nine.
So my last one is a 66 Seacor easement request, so on August 19th, we received a call from Mr. Thomas Gregory, he was here earlier tonight, I thought this might be voted on, but if you're thinking about it, I told him to come back next week. At the referenced address, requesting an easement on property owned by the Town of Carmel, it's parcel 74 dot 42 dash 1 dash 63 at 64 Seacor Road. He's looking to sell his property, and the survey of his property shows a portion of the driveway of, on town property adjacent to the water tower on Seacor Road. He'd like to request an easement from the town for this portion of the driveway. He has provided a attached specific meets and bounds description of the easement, and he's been made aware that he would be responsible for payment of any recording fees and that the conveyance of the easement as a property interest is subject to permissive referendum. Greg has been working with Mr. Thomas's lawyer to finalize the meets and bounds, but I, you know, they should be ready by next week.
For one dollar? I, what? Is that what?
Is that the amount they want?
Question for you, okay.
But is there...
The light now, it says a dollar.
Yeah, that's the standard consideration in an easement, whether or not there's an actual payment or not, okay? That's a single-family residence, and my understanding is it is your tank parcel that it goes over at Seacor?
Very small portion of it, yes.
It's entirely too, all I have done is make sure that whatever easement agreement and meets and bounds description are in proper form. Anything that you do is subject to permissive, so if anybody's agreed by it, they can certainly take that action. But it's up to the Board, it's not something you're going to vote on until next week, so we can discuss it.
It doesn't impact operations at the plant, just...
Because the tower's way up?
Towers, it's, it's way off, so you're looking at the tower, it's way off to the right is where this is, and it doesn't impact our access to the tank, but again, it's just here for considerations of the Board, for the Board, sorry, just its driveway.
Thanks, thanks for everything tonight.
Thank you, Rich.
So our Town Controller, Mary Ann Maxwell, is here to consider accepting the year-end 2024 LoSAP annual reports for Carmel Ambulance District and the two Carmel Fire Protection Districts, one and two, Mahopac and Mahopac Falls.
Good evening, you all should have received the folders here, which has the summary reports in there for Carmel Ambulance, Carmel Fire One and Carmel Fire Two. So I'll go through Carmel Ambulance first. This fund is doing, is doing, continues to do well. The annual contribution for 2025 is $15,124. The trust fund investment return is at 13.3%, which is similar to last year, which was 13.8%. And the funded ratio is 127%, which we like to see at anywhere above 100%. So this, this LoSAP program is run through New York State, and it's, it's doing, it's doing well. If you see on page two, the funded ratio in the top right corner continues to be over 100% for the Carmel Ambulance program, LoSAP program. For Carmel Fire Protection District Number One, the program contribution for 2026 is 61,0216. The requested contribution for 2025 is $84,040. I think I've mentioned to you guys in the past that I've always budgeted higher, you know, so I budget 250,000 to keep this fund ratio at a, you know, over 100%, because if, you know, our investments, you know, fall, then we're still covered with this, with the investment. So I am budgeting again 250 for 2026, so we'll continue this, this trend. The funded ratio for this is 124% as opposed to 111%. So that, Mahopac Falls is also doing well with that, the LoSAP program. And then Mahopac Carmel Fire Protection District Number Two, the contribution of 2026 is 30,252, and we're budgeting 230,000. So we're, again, continuing to, you know, fund this, you know, higher than, you know, expected to keep the investments funded, so, okay?
Thank you. Thanks for staying.
Yeah, so, I know, you're welcome.
So, so I just thought I'd remind the Board to please review the minutes from the August 6th, 13th, and September 3rd meetings. Chief Hoffman is here, and... And this is to consider a request for the licensing agreement at Reed Memorial Library, and we are fortunate to have the Director of the Library with us. Has the whole Board met, Denise?
Uh, yeah.
I know, you did, yeah.
Denise is wonderful.
Chief?
Thank you, Mrs. Supervisor. Before I start with that item, I just want to update the Board on a, on a pretty large project that we're working on. As the Board is aware, we are implementing a new computer system for our records management and computer aided dispatch, the Motorola Flex system. The Board passed a resolution late last year for us to proceed with that, to replace our current system, which is outdated and is no, no longer supported by the vendor, and the system's been sold a couple of times. When we implemented that system, we had, prior to that, we went for a demonstration with a number of other agencies down in Westchester, speaking with those other chiefs that I have a relationship with, with the Chiefs Association. We decided to contact our grant writer and explore funding options. We did, with GNG Municipal Contracting, we applied for a local government efficiency grant through New York State, and we were just advised last week that we won 1.2 million dollars for the project, which means 200,000 for each agency. That's us, Town of Bedford, Town of Eastchester, Town of Maranick, Village of Bronxville, and the Village of Osning. So each department will get 200,000 to implement this system together collaboratively. And additionally, with this system, we also need, we needed to update our computer server, and with, through GNG, we explored a Department of Homeland Security cybersecurity grant for upgrading that server, and we also were notified that we won 50,000 to put towards that. So we're, we've reduced the cost for this technology project significantly, and hopefully we'll be able to cover the entire project without dipping into our budget at all, so just wanted to give you that update.
Thank you for taking care of the residents with that grant.
Thank you, sir. Onto our, our item. Recently, Director Martins came to me and made, brought to my attention that the agreement that Reed Memorial Library has with the Town of Carmel, Carmel Police Department, for the use of their internet connection for our license plate reader system at 6 and 52 had expired back in 2020. I was unaware, she, the previous administration at the library was unaware. What it is, is we utilize that internet connection to tie into the Westchester Putnam Regional Real-Time Crime Center in order to maintain that system, and in exchange, the town maintains a security camera on the bench outside the library to prevent vandalism or vagrancy or whatever. It's a wash as far as costs go, and between the two of us, we just came up with an updated license agreement, and it would be my recommendation, and I believe Director Martin's recommendation as well, that we renew this agreement. You, well, you can, well, you did it originally.
Yeah.
As chief, as the former chief, so, yes. And I could turn it over to Director Martins if she has anything to add.
No, no, I didn't write it.
Does that write it?
I only signed it, I didn't write it.
Is the word pursuant in there? No, he can spell it, he's gonna say it.
I just can't pronounce it. No, Director Martins.
Yes.
So today, when we had our meeting about budgeting, you were telling me about these ideas that you're having about community expanding and all that, like, tell us, just...
Yes, so, so to go back to, just quickly to the cameras, so in case you don't know where they are, they're on the side of the building, where the bench is on Seminary Hill, and then they also go over into the intersection, as Chief said, so the library doesn't have any issues with privacy, so there's no signage posted that cameras are in use, because we do not have any access to any of that footage.
Yes.
Some residents may be concerned, and I have had some people say, well, you have cameras, but no, they're not our cameras, and we have no access to the footage. So there's no problems with privacy itself, we just wanted to say that...
It was the clientele in that area that we were having issues with.
Yes, so, yes, so I would like to thank the chief for his support. We have had to call, we have had to call the Carmel Police Department a few times about people who were publicly intoxicated and passed out on the lawn, and also, you know, kind of sleeping on the bench, so, so the police have been very helpful in helping us to alleviate that situation, and so people are happy to come to storytime, and don't come in and tell me that someone is dead outside, and I should probably call somebody. Thank you. What else is going on over by us is that the smoke shop that closed down is now an available retail space, and the library and the library board have been in discussion with the landlord about possibly the library renting that space, but we would love to do that with a community partner. We're talking to everybody around town, in case you don't know, Councilman Kearns has been inside the space, it's something that could be used for meetings, Carmel High School kids could walk there after school, our friends group is just forming, which is like the PTA of the library, and some of the thoughts from them were that they could have an ongoing book sale and have people who have aged out, who have developmental challenges and have aged out of the school system, but then they could be mentored by high school students who are in walkable distance, and we could be teaching people job skills, soft skills, retail things, we could have like a Keurig machine that they can set up and help with. So we see this as something where community meetings could happen, we could expand our library services. In case you don't know, we are not ADA compliant because of the history of the building and the location on the corner. That would make part of the library services ADA compliant, there is a ramp on the side, and there is a bathroom that could be turned into something that was handicapped accessible. So we have been talking to community partners, I was at the CIC meeting today, they said that everybody there, from the school to the health department, thought that it was a great idea for us to have a place for people to go, you know, if you need to have a soccer parents meeting, come on in, you know, that would be a space that we would not, as the library, be charging for. If we partnered with another organization and they wanted to collect, that would be that. So, yeah, so we are looking for support, we're looking for funding, I've talked to the county executive, I've talked to all the senators, we appreciate everything that the town does, and we know that the library has a responsibility to the taxpayers to make sure that we are using their funds responsibly. So what we're basically looking for this year is to get into the building, and I understand that we have our own vote, which is coming up, and so next year, we thought that if we were able to get into the building this year with help from a number of organizations, that we would have things to show the taxpayers about why we needed to increase funding to have that space. But as the brand-new director, like, asking them to all of a sudden, like, oh, I'm going to increase the library budget by $60,000 when we only ask for, you know, 25% increase, I think is a, is a heavy lift.
So, yeah, so that, I toured the facility with the director and her staff and some community members from the hamlet, and I was able to see their vision if they were to get this, this space next door, and, you know, you hit right on the head, you know, the hamlet doesn't really have a, a community center where they can hold those meetings and their Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts can host their meetings, and something that I took away from that meeting, too, is one of your staff members had mentioned a computer lab, that you guys don't really have space in your current situation now, so there's a lot of programs that they were looking to give back to, you know, all age demographics in the hamlet, so, you know, that's something that the Board and all of us here, we can, we could discuss further about, because it was really interesting seeing your vision, and I was, I was, I was on board, I'm happy about it, so I'm sure these guys would also love to see it.
Yeah, and we would end up, possibly would have municipal parking lot where the water plant currently is, it's right there. So when you take that down.
Correct.
There could be a lot, because there's very limited space there if anyone's up in the hamlet.
This is a great, this is a great, this is a great, this is a great application for the grant that we're going to be submitting for, for the DRI, the New York Forward, this is, that would be a perfect project for that grant.
Yeah, I, I concur, I have folders, I always have folders as a librarian. So this has some information, I don't know if that we're requesting for this year, but it has a little blurb in the back about what we just talked about, with a little more information. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, if you already have yours, so you can...
You want a cabinet?
Of course, yeah, so if you have any questions, let me know, and the landlord actually let Councilman Kearns and I go in that day, she gave us like a one-time code, so if you want to see the actual space, we're happy to try to work that out.
There's nothing there, sold down to...
Yes, Chief.
Well, and one of the collaborations that we're actually participating in with the library is, I believe it's October 2nd, oh, October 2nd.
In your folder.
Sergeant Makeham and Officer Cesario of our Community Relations Team will be giving a cybersecurity presentation for our seniors to prevent scams, for the seniors in the hamlet and throughout the town, but it's one of those collaborations that we're, we're going to put it in the, the library proper, but we'd like to expand if and when the library does get that property and utilize that space.
That's great.
And of course, the issue will be that we're not ADA compliant, so any seniors in that area right now for this program may have trouble navigating our building, but if we're in the other building, we could allow more seniors to come, because we do have to have cutoffs for programs for fire code, obviously, and so we often have wait lists, but it would be amazing to be able to invite even more seniors in, because there's a ramp there.
It needs TLC, but there is a ramp there.
Yes, yes, the whole building needs a little airing out, there was a cigar humidor part at the back, but...
But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming, thank you for getting us grant money.
Thanks, sir. Have a good night.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, guys.
So, Michael Stern?
It did, oh my God, he was huge.
The Highway Superintendent here to consider a request to go out for his sand and salt bids. Superintendent?
Good evening, Board, Council. I am requesting that the following items be advertised for bid, sand, guide rail, and winter mix. And that is all I have.
Thanks.
Thanks.
All right, thanks for having me.
I appreciate that.
Thanks for coming. Thanks, Mike.
You waited, you waited the whole time for that.
Yeah, I could have read that one for you. So, and then the only item left is our building inspector, Michael Carnaza, has put in a quest for Joe Wilikowski, our fire inspector, to go to training that's mandatory for fire inspectors. It's October 14th through the 16th at the Marriott up in Albany on Wolf Road. So tomorrow, we're... So tomorrow, we're just doing a moment of silence in the morning at 8:46 at the Memorial. And I know that there's a big ceremony at, what time is the ceremony at the? What about the other one you're doing during the day at Bureau of Emergency Services?
8:30.
8:30. And there's also a larger ceremony at the Bureau of Emergency Services on Old Route Six up in the Hamlet. And then at Cornerstone Park, there's the 9/11-
And there's one at the VFW, the Mahopac VFW at 5 o'clock as well.
At 5 o'clock.
Correct.
You want to make a comment? All right, you didn't speak before, so I'll let you speak. Go ahead.
Good evening, Board. Mary Ann Chiluzan. So last week, I came in front of all of you to speak about Geimer Drive. And today, I feel it's my obligation to thank each and every one of you. When I was here last Wednesday, Superintendent Mike Stern was at my house at 7:30 in the morning. He spoke with me and my husband, and he listened to our concerns. And he understood what we were saying about safety, and safety was the main issue going down to Parker. So the very next day, I saw, I guess it was his man that was cutting down the trees, which opened up to Parker. You could actually see Parker. Actually, a lot of my neighbors were happy, and they expressed their happiness on Facebook. Next was the sign. I know Mike, Frank, Supervisor Suzie, and I met you Sunday. You asked about the sign. The sign is there. The sign is great. It said, "Stay in your lane." I never thought it was going to say, "Stay in your lane."
People driving?
I was actually driving and saying yes. So kudos to all of you. I know you get dumped on. I waited here all night through every hour. So I can tell you all, this is, the print is bad, this is the way it used to be, and this is it is now.
How do you tell where the lane is if there's no line?
What?
Oh, nothing.
And here is the sign. So there's a sign that-
You sure of the sign?
So when you go down the road, it says, "Stay in your lane." So when the uncommon traffic comes, it says, "Stay in your lane." So I just want to thank each and every one of you that it was done. This guy was out at my house at 7:30 in the morning. It was taken care of. You guys said I was going to get a sign, and you were right on the money. So thank you all. Thanks to all of you.
It's him.
Oh, and Chief Hoffman. Chief Hoffman, I knew I had it. And he spoke in the back last week, and he said, "Mary Ann, we'll take care of it." So thank you.
Do you want to plug your walk as long as you're standing there?
Mary Ann, thank you for bringing it to our attention, too.
Yes, because it was-
Thank you both.
Yes, and it was so many years that somebody put, I'm not going to mention anybody's name, that said, "God, we actually see Parker. We actually see a road, and this is what we've been fighting for for so many years." I have one other question, and my question is from our, my neighbors, since I'm the only one that speaks. How come the Oaks cannot be opened? I know the Fire Department has said it was a safety hazard, Mahopac Falls, for it to be closed. Because if there is a fire, they have to come up through Geimer, which is my street, right? Go to Archer, then go into the Oaks and find the house. So can anyone explain? With a key, correct? Okay, so they're saying the time they take the key out, this is what I heard from them, the time they take the key out, you know- Yes. Okay, well, they said they want it open, but they said, "We will give you a key." So does anybody know why the Oaks, because it would eliminate a lot of our traffic on our road as an outlet? Is there a special reason why it's not opened? Or nobody knows?
It's been there for years.
So it means it could never be-
A lot of the portion of that road is not protected, so it's not a town road at home.
The what, Rich?
It might have been when the Planning Board approved that development.
So that's who we would have to go to, the Planning Board?
No, the Planning Board doesn't have to do with it, which was-
Oh.
The Planning Board approved when they, when that development came through. There were requirements within the development. We have a few of those roads throughout town.
Really?
Where there's a gate around it. And the Planning Board, as part of the requirement for that settlement, said that will be gated. You have to give Fire Department a knox box or a way to-
Right, I understand that. Yeah, that's what I was talking.
Dedicated, and it'll be dedicated. It probably has to do with the fact that we're in Lays on 6A and the traffic that goes on 6A.
Okay. Okay. Okay, with that being said, this Sunday, the 14th, is our prayer walk, our sixth annual prayer walk. I hope all of you are going to make it. We are honoring Kirin, which you all know Kirin. And we're also honoring Sheriff McConville. His wife will be there to attend the plaque. So I hope everybody can make it and spread the word. Of course, everyone is welcome. Have a nice rest of your week. Thank you. I'm tired. I need to go.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
Board have comments?
Not anymore.
Get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor? Good night, everybody. See you next Wednesday.